And I see the recording has started. And all the council members are here, four of us are showing. So I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome Vice Mayor and council members. Service, I call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council for April fourth, twenty twenty two to order. Councilmember Gary, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. The city of Albany recognized that we occupied the land originally protected by Confederate villages of the general. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to replay the death that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney Tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The city of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gary. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gary?
Here.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Here.
And Mayor Jordan?
Here. This brings us to ceremonial matters. Our first ceremonial matter is a proclamation of Education and Sharing Day. Which I will move to and read if I can figure out which tab that's on, there we go. Whereas equality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country, and our society at large. And in Albany, we strive for the betterment of all of our citizens through an increased focus on education sharing. And whereas we presently battle a global pandemic, which has disrupted traditional models of education across our nation, while concurrently motivating a focus on the stronger core values we wish to impart to children and adults beyond academic achievement. And whereas in order to achieve its highest goals, education must be more than just a training in facts and figures, or even in basic skills as important as they are. It must also include instruction in the ethical values of our civilization. And whereas such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness, imbued with the awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can make a major impact in this world. And whereas one of the leading global advocates for the advancement of education, Lubavitch or Rebbe Rabbi Menachem Schnerson of righteous memory stressed the importance of moral and ethical education as the bedrock of humanity and the hallmark of a healthy society, and strongly urged that education be reinforced by the inculcation of strong moral values. And whereas April twelfth, twenty twenty two will mark one hundred and twenty years since the Rebbe's birth, and the date will be celebrated across the United States and around the globe in tribute to the Rebbe's vision, guidance, and leadership. Whereas in nineteen seventy eight, the United States Congress established Education and Sharing Day on the Rebbe's birthday. Now therefore, the city of Albany proclaims Tuesday, April twelfth, twenty twenty two to be Education and Sharing Day, and calls upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to those within your communities and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all. And I believe there is an attendee. Perhaps, I don't know if Rabbi Bell is here able to make a few comments?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council members, for the opportunity to be on this meeting, very honored. I run the Chabad Jewish Center in El Cerrito. We serve the Jewish community in El Cerrito and Albany. One out of about fifty Chabad centers in the Bay Area, or many more in California and across the globe. Today's proclamation honors marking Education and Sharing Day on April twelfth, honors Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schnerson of blessed memory, known as the Rebbe. Picture is right behind me over here on the wall. The Rebbe is considered to be one of the most influential rabbis in modern history. Leaders in general. This year will mark, like you mentioned before, this year will mark one hundred and twenty years since Rebbe was born. Rebbe was born in Ukraine in nineteen oh two, eventually escaped Poland and coming to the US in nineteen forty one, and then the Rebbe became the leader of the Chabad Lubavitch movement in nineteen fifty. And while he concentrated his efforts on rebuilding and re-energizing Jewish community after the devastation of the Holocaust, Rebbe also paid a lot of attention to the needs of all of humanity. Which is why US Congress and President Carter designated this day in nineteen seventy eight as Education Day, honoring the Rebbe and his efforts for education and sharing among all people. This was followed by every US president until our president, President Joe Biden, declaring this day as a day to refocus our efforts on education and sharing, creating a brighter future for society. Often we think of education only as knowledge and the means to be able to build a career, to make it in the big world out there. But the Rebbe emphasized many times how education is not only about the acquisition of knowledge. And he encouraged world leaders and education activists on the need to focus great importance on education to build good character, to increase awareness of moral and ethical values, helping us to look out for one another and to add goodness and kindness in the world. This foundation is the bedrock of society and keeps the world together. Knowledge can sometimes come with ego, it can come with arrogance, it can come with desire to be powerful, when it's based on the foundation of being kind and compassionate, of good character, good character traits, sharing and caring, then the knowledge becomes a source of beautiful things and changes the world for good. So we're in a time now that we can't help but look around and see some terrible things in the world that are going on, and we see the power for destruction. We see that it's greater than ever before. At the same time, we see the power of goodness and the quest for kindness and peace in the world, and the ability to actualize that is even also greater than ever before. We all read about those two teens, the two Harvard teens who made an app. A few clicks, they made an app and they're helping thousands of refugees from Ukraine be sheltered during this time. Small acts of random goodness and kindness can change the world. And it's these acts of kindness that turn into routine acts, from random to routine acts of goodness and kindness, and create a brighter future. This is why I have a charity box here with me, and I'm going to put a couple of coins in the charity box. Help another person. Having a charity box in our home, in our office, or in our kid's bedroom reminds us of the ongoing duty we have as individuals to share, care, and give to one another. So like the Rebbe always emphasized, it's not up to somebody out there, it's up to every single one of us to change the world, starting from our cities over here in the Bay Area, and I want to bless all of you today and bless you and Mayor, Mayor Jordan, that your efforts in proclaiming Education and Sharing Day in Albany should enact and bring about a brighter future for the city, which is already a caring and kind place. And it should bring, may it bring to more acts of random and routine kindness, sharing and compassion, and really change the world. So thank you for everything you do and for making this important declaration. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you Rabbi Bell, I think it's particularly stark. I just learned recently that Ukraine was the location of the Paleus Settlement, which is where the Russian Empire essentially geographically constrained the Jewish people within the empire to live. Like it's particularly remarkable that the Rebbe came from that part of the world. Thank you for sharing. I don't know if any other council members have comments? Not seeing any. Not seeing any hand raised. I thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you so much.
And with that, we will move on to a recognition of Albany High School athlete achievements. Councilmember McQuaid is gonna share with us.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to, I do want to thank the Rabbi for his very inspiring words. We were honored to, and pleased to recognize the successful winter season of Albany High School Athletics. Please forgive any mispronunciation of names that I'm sure to make. The Albany High School girls soccer team advanced to North Coast section tournament. Congratulations to Trini Porez and Angelica Coats, who were named first team All Tri-County Athletic League, which would be TCAL. The Albany High School boys soccer team made the TCAL playoffs and enjoyed a special night when Antoine Ivchenko's clutch goal in extra time gave the Cougars a hard fought four-four tie versus rival El Cerrito. He and Theo Finan were voted first team all TCAL. Five Albany boys wrestlers went to North Coast section championships. Team MVP Asun Momen, team captain Josh Ambrosio, TCAL champion James Hogan, were joined by Emmanuel Schultz and Nasa Mansour. Abby Sistenski finished a truly great Albany wrestling career by qualifying for and very, very near placing in the California State Championships. Abby recorded an astounding twenty-seven and four record as a senior, winning the NCS championship and earning team MVP play honors along the way. The girls' basketball team bounced back from a previous winless season to, for a four-and-two league record, including a thrilling come-from-behind victory over league champions Deansa. The girls made Albany's first NCS appearance in several years. The Albany High School Cougar Boys Basketball Team started the season in spectacular fashion, winning ten straight games. They concluded the regular season with a heart-stopping last-second win over rival Saint Mary's, advancing to the NCS tournament for the eighth consecutive year. So congratulations to all of our athletes, both in high school and in middle school. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, and I took the opportunity to learn a little bit more about the athletic leagues and learn that TCAL covers, as I understand it, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, the TCAL covers from Albany through to Vallejo and all the cities and high schools in between. So congratulations to those athletes. Not seeing anybody who is, looks anxious to make a comment, not seeing any hands raised. We'll move on to the city manager's report, if you will, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. April is Earth Month. This year, the city of Albany is partnering with the Watershed Project to bring Earth Day activities to Albany, both in person and online. Visit albanyca.org/earthday for additional resources and online activities. We are proud to share that there's something for everyone on this page, so please take a look throughout the month. A couple of updates from Public Works. Asphalt pavement installation was completed last week within the segment one reach of Washington Avenue project. And segment two at the Cornell intersection will be paved tomorrow. Thank you for bearing with us as we had to do this important work and hopefully when the students are back from spring break, it'll be nice and paved. In coordination with the school district spring break as well, the city has scheduled two projects which require work near Ocean View Elementary School, repair of the south crosswalk of Buchanan and Jackson, and sewer main installation on Jackson and Solano Avenue. Local access will be maintained for residents of the neighborhoods during the work, but please make sure to leave some extra time traveling in these areas. Residents seeking to cross project areas are advised to use alternative routes for access, and for more information, please check our Public Works page on the website, Construction Alerts page. The Albany Community Grocery Program is a wonderful success, and I wanted to, again, recognize the great work of our city council in leading this effort and allowing staff to implement and develop this program using our Rescue Act funds. The Community Grocery Program conducted by Albany Cares held its third grocery and essential items giveaway last Friday, where thirty bags were filled with food and fifty-four bags with essential items for people in our community. The next giveaway will be Friday, May sixth, and as noted, the program continues to experience steady growth. Any questions can be directed to our new COVID community outreach coordinator Kate Miller at five one zero five two four nine two eight three, or via email to albanycares@albanyca.org. Also, we are excited to present a new event for the community, the Albany Community Expo. Hopefully you've seen these banners up at a few key locations in town. This event will be happening at our community center, walkable from any location in Albany as well as biking. Those modes of transit are highly encouraged. Again, from ten to two, it's a fun, family-friendly way to learn about community-based organizations in Albany as well as city services. It'll also include a free raffle, food from local restaurants, live entertainment, and a compost giveaway. So again, hopefully something for everyone. So please take advantage of this new event. You will soon be receiving a Albany Recreation Summer Catalog. This is a summary of all the programs and offerings throughout the summer months. A lot of camp opportunities for students who will be enjoying a school break. Also, our COVID Small Business Assistance Grant Program, another program authorized by the city council for this important funding source. This Friday, April eighth, the city will be launching the Small Business Grant Assistance Program, and the application period will open. Please stay tuned for that. We will send it all through all of our social media channels on our website and connect with our business partners to get that information out. And finally, the citywide garage sale applications are now available. This is another well-loved community event that we're happy to be able to bring back. And so please take a look at our website. It's Saturday, May seventh, from nine to three, and when you submit your application, it helps get you registered and included in the overall garage sale listings. That concludes my report, and city clerk, Anne, thank you for displaying.
Thank you, city manager. If anyone would like to ask a question about or comment on the city manager's report, please press your raise hand button. You will have one minute. If you are on the phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Note, this is for questions and comments on the city manager's report only. If you have comments on matters not on the agenda, the time for those is next. In this and all comments and questions during the meeting, please address the council, not other attendees, and respect each person that has spoken. The council wants everyone to feel comfortable speaking and not be intimidated by others' comments or reactions. And I see one attendee has their hand raised. Thank you, city clerk, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Preston Jordan. Good evening, everybody, city council. City manager's report, I have a question regarding the food giveaway. I guess it's only once a month? Is it first Friday or something? Does that just mean twelve times a year? And I was, I was wondering, you use some sort of funds you mentioned on that, how much money are you spending to give away food once a month? I was just wondering the budget on that, and the last thing I was wondering is, there's a start time of ten AM? But there's no end, end time? And I was just wondering if you could, you know, give it, give it an approximate end time because on a Friday, you know, people are getting off work at five o'clock maybe, are you still giving out food till six?
Thank, thank you. City manager, I don't know if you like to answer any of those questions. I think there was times, a number of times a year, day of the month, cost.
Sure.
Time.
Yeah, as mentioned, the primary information can be found by connecting with the program directly, and I'm happy to relay those, that detailed information back to Mr. Pinguelo. At this point in time, it's a brand-new program, so it's still in the works. This funding is a limited one-time funding source from the federal government per the pandemic and recovery from the pandemic. The hours of operation are while supplies last, and our community services department also delivers food and groceries to folks in need, so we have a variety of different programs to meet individual needs.
A follow-up question, and certainly understandable if you don't have this information, do you know if supplies ran out at this first event, or were there still supplies left at the end of whatever period?
I believe that we were able to accommodate everyone that attended. I need to follow up with additional details.
Okay, thank you very much. Not seeing any more hands raised, questions on the city manager's report. On to Good of the City. This is for attendees to provide the council comments, information, and questions on an item that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hands now. My phone again is pressing star nine. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised may be referred to a future agenda or to staff for comment. And I see two attendees with hands raised. Three attendees, if you go ahead and admit the first attendee, thank you, welcome.
Hi, this is Margie Marks. I want to apologize first to the council because I'm going backwards to the last meeting. I wanted to comment on the housing element. There was something I noticed after the meeting that I hadn't noticed before, and that is the regional, the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment for Albany for the next cycle, the next eight years, is three hundred and eight very low-income units, one hundred and seventy-eight low-income units. So that comes to four eighty-six. Approved units to be occupied after June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, which is when the cycle begins, is eighty-six. That includes sixty-five very low, twenty-one low. This includes projects like the Sahab project. So projects that are already approved for very low and lowest eighty-six. So if we subtract the eighty-six and before eighty-six, we get four hundred. That the city of Albany needs to build four hundred very low and low. However, UC Village is planning to build a unit in the village with two hundred and eighty-nine units. And the city is appealing their RENA allotment, saying that those two hundred and eighty-nine units should count toward the four hundred very low and low units that the city has to build. And as a citizen in Albany who wants to fight to put every low-income housing unit in the housing element that we could get, I want to do that. And those units at UC Village are not eligible for a regular Albany resident. You have to be a student at UC. In addition, the city of Davis has a student housing going up in their UC center with about a hundred units, and they're trying to get that out of their, out of the RENA numbers. And the state has written them back and said to them, look, you're gonna have to police these units then. Is it the student who can afford to live in it? Is the parent who's paying for it? You know, is the city really gonna spend time to police these units? Two hundred and eighty-nine units at UC Village. I would really rather the city spend its time getting partnerships with low-income housing places like Sahab and other, you know, nonprofit builders to build in some of these larger units that we have. Before my time runs out, I also want to say that I do want to get rid of single-family housing-only units zoning in the city of Albany, but I want to fight for those four hundred units for our city. We need below-market and low-income units. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Hello, I haven't been able to hear you yet. It is your turn to speak, if you would like.
Laura Scheffler.
Welcome, welcome back. It is your turn to speak.
For Jeremiah?
For Jeremiah, yes.
Okay, thank you, good evening. Yeah, you know, the problem, one of the problems is with the universities. I don't believe they pay any property taxes. You know, the universities are so big, but I don't think they pay any taxes. So if we got the housing from the universities, I'm not sure how we would collect any taxes. I mean, it might qualify as housing numbers. Anyway, okay, so what I was gonna say is, um, two things. We had a a Rabbi in the beginning of the meeting, set the tone of the meeting, talk about morals and ethics and good people and good citizens and good for humanity, and all this great stuff. And, and talking about all these great things. And we have great things going on in Albany. We've got the laundry program, we've got the shower program. We've got these great things. You know, and it's like the world, there's a war going on, Russia and Ukraine. And it seems like in Albany, there's this, there's this informal war with homeless people and, and city staff and city council. And it's, it's strange because city council, we all voted for you to represent us and do good for humanity and do good morals and, and do all this good stuff like the Rabbi said. So, so why do you put up signs in the library of no parking? It's kind of like you're just bullying the homeless. What's the problem with people parking their cars in the library? You know, city council meetings sometimes go till after midnight, and, and you want to make a rule that you can't park past ten PM? So you're discouraging public participation by saying that you can't even be at the library in your car using the wifi on a city council meeting past ten, or else the police are gonna kick you out. You, you put up signs just to bully people. You sunsetted the library board because those signs would have went up on the library board committee. I was also gonna talk about something else. Last city council meeting, you gave Slano Avenue Association so many thousands of dollars when Margie and Jim and Beth, we all asked you last year to fund the laundry program, the shower program, and you said no. So, so you say no to help good people with good ethics in your community, you say no, but then you want to say yes to entertainment for one day?
Thank you.
It's your morals right, and your ethics straight.
Welcome. Unfortunately, we still cannot hear you.
Laura Scheffler, are you there? Okay, if you have any comments, please go ahead and send an email to citycouncil@albanyca.org. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Seeing our public comments, I just wanted to briefly comment on the first Good of the City commenter to clarify. Because we don't have the benefit of Jeff Bond's lovely graphs in front of us from the housing element. But I just wanted to clarify that our plan does, our most realistic plan essentially plans for not having those UC units to count because we know that the court cases have turned against those being counted recently. So while they would maybe be helpful, we are not relying on them to meet our RENA numbers for low income and very low income, nor if they were counted, would that mean we would give up on building other units.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tiedemann. And I will offer for the record on the second comment that And I, I will offer for the record on the second comment that my memory and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the council did seek to contribute to the laundry program last year, um, and for administrative reasons on the recipient's side, it was not able to be successfully transmitted. With that, we move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is for items that are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item? I see council member Nathan, I'm gonna try to keep my name dyslexia under control this time.
Um, seven-four, the Canes Adams Bike Way and seven-eight, the Policing Commission.
Seven-four and seven-eight. Thank you, Councilmember Nathan. Any other items to pull? Not seeing uh, Councilmember Gary.
I'll add seven-six.
Seven-six, okay. Any of the other two council members have unspoken? No, and I do not have anything else to pull. I do see hands up. I don't know if those are hands to pull additional items. Um, if they are, um, I'm gonna ask that you take your hands down unless at this point in time you want to pull an additional item. This is only for pulling an additional item. We will get to discussing the items that have already been pulled in order. Okay, I don't see any hands for people raising additional items uh, to be pulled. I appreciate you're taking your hands down. Um, so the first item that we will go to was pulled by Councilmember Nathan and it's item um, seven dash four, which regards uh, letting a contract for construction of the Canes and Adams Bicycle Boulevard pilot, if I recall correctly.
Yes, and um, we've received a few, a number of emailed questions about it. And I just wanted to check that everything um, had been answered um, and that we, we are prepared to go forward.
Is that a question for staff I'm taking?
Yes, yes.
City manager, I don't know if you can opine on whether all the, all the questions have been answered or not.
Yeah, well, I would mostly like to recognize our um, CIP manager Allison Correo is here tonight to answer any of the more substantive questions as well.
Hi, hi, this is Allison uh, calling in.
Hi there, thanks for calling in.
Hi, so um, in terms of uh, whether all of the questions are answered from the people who have called in, um, I would start with saying that I think uh, most of them were answered during the um, planning process. Um, there have been minor changes to the design set. Uh, we had to make sure that the fire truck turns could make their, fire truck could make their turns, and so there were minor adjustments. I suppose in terms of answering that question, I would probably need more specifics about exactly which items you want me to speak to. But I can definitely provide a, a kind of an overview of where we are and how we got here, which might serve to uh, start this conversation if that's.
Yes, I, I think that would be helpful. Thank you. I think the important thing is that we uh, uh, articulate what changes uh, have occurred since this was to the project, since this was uh, last before us, just in a, just in a very summary way.
Sure, um, I'm gonna start, uh, you know, uh, from maybe where this project started at a very high level during the planning. Um, it's a long project, so it's quite a bit of history to it, and then maybe dig into the details then. Um, at the kind of project-specific level, once I finish that, that kind of bigger picture where how we got here. Um, this was a, I'd say a ten-year project at this point that started during development of the two thousand and twelve um, Albany Active Transportation Plan. There was um, questions from council at that time um, about the specifics of the project and um, we went through multiple design reviews and alternatives to tend up where we are today. Um, the pilot project as presented was then approved in September two thousand and nineteen by council. This is after multiple reviews through the Traffic and Safety Commission now called the Transportation Commission. In two thousand and nineteen, again, it was approved by council and adopted into the CIP plan in November of two thousand and twenty. About four months after that, unfortunately, the pandemic started and with the shelter-in-place orders and the disruptions to vehicle and pedestrian traffic patterns, we felt it was necessary to hold off an implementation until we could get a sense on the before and after conditions um, so that we could provide good evaluation criteria um, as requested from council. Um, with traffic returning pre-pandemic levels, we've scheduled for the pre-construction evaluation for mid-April. Um, the location and types of bollards are some of the things that have um, been adjusted based on coordination with emergency vehicles. We did about two days' worth of various turn assessments to determine where the bollards could be located while maintaining access for emergency vehicles. This was on both sides of the street. And um, so you'll see that some of the bollards in the plan set are located inside of the intersection. These are generally where there's bulbous and larger cross streets to provide plenty of access. And for the other locations, the bollards are located in, you know, on the outside of the crosswalk or the intersection. Um, where unfortunately, we were unable to make sure that vehicles could access them or you're sorry, emergency vehicles could get out of the blocks unless we located these bollards on the outside of the intersection, meaning um, just, it's hard to explain without some visuals, but inside an intersection, meaning um, within the four crosswalk, um, crossing crosswalks and outside an intersection, meaning on the outside of the four crosswalks. I, I hope that's covering um, the visuals. Um, other changes include the bollards. So the bollards originally proposed were kind of unspecified, they're just bollards that were in um, in some of the photos or, I guess, um, proposals, they were shown as kind of a Berkeley-type concrete barrier. Um, at the time, the, the plastic the plastic bollards that we're proposing currently were not as available, they weren't as common as well. Um, we're proposing these barriers uh, for a couple of reasons, or quite a few reasons. If you, in the staff report, we go over in detail, but they're much less costly to install. They're easily replaceable by our, our crews as well. If they get knocked down, we can go out there and replace them with fairly straightforward processes. If we have to replace a concrete bollard, that would require getting a contractor on board. Um, purchase of it is a little bit more complicated as well. And so our thinking on this front was primarily that with a pilot project using the, the plastic bollards um, would be preferable. Um, other changes include, um, let's see. I think there were certain drawings that were shown with, because they were using the construction, the concrete barriers, they were shown with a do-not-enter sign located directly inside the concrete barrier. Um, with these bollards, we are now showing that the do-not-enter sign is located at either corner of the entrance of, for the project. Um, in addition to that, we, we have um, no left and no right turn signage that's on the approach path in each direction. Um, to make it more apparent as you're coming up to these intersections that there, this is a one-way out for motor vehicles. Um, I think those were the primary changes. I would have to look through the staff report in more detail to identify if there's any more, but they're not coming to mind.
That's great. Thank you very much.
I'm impressed at what a historian you became, given that this goes back way before your time. And uh, working without visuals, which I can share as an engineer and scientist, is, is not easy to do. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Quaid.
Thank you. Um, Allison, thank you for that presentation and also excuse me, for answering so many of my questions the other day. Uh, Mayor, do you want questions now or comments or both, or what's your preference right now?
Uh, questions. And then we'll go to, to public, follow the usual pattern, questions now, then we have um, some attendees who have their hands raised. We'll go to comments and we'll bring it back for discussion.
Okay, um. So I guess my first question, I looked at, in the city of Berkeley where they have these bollards at one end of a block, so similar to what we're doing. But I realized it's only one block. And this was on Chamille, Chamilla, Chamilla Tenth or Chamilla Tenth. Um, so I'm wondering, is there a street in Berkeley that has the entire length of the street with bollards at one end or any place in, in the country that has, has what we're proposing? And are still looking at cars parking correctly with their right, right tires against the curb? Is that, is that still the plan on this project?
Should I answer now or do I wait until questions? I just want to make sure I'm reading what we're, what we're doing here.
Thanks. I think the usual is to, to wait, um, unless it gets to be too many for working memory to hold. In which case I'll try to help. Are there any other questions, Councilmember Quaid?
That'll do for now.
Okay. So the, the two questions that, that I heard were, um, are there any streets that you, I guess, or any other staff are aware of where there is a semi-diverter? Which is, I guess, the technical name for these, block after block for several blocks is the first question. And if you don't happen to know, is it no is a fine answer?
This is now time for quite, for answering?
This is time for answering, I'm sorry. She, yeah. She's, uh, she finished her question.
Um, so we're not aware of any other street locally. Um, I think we would have to go back and, and find out if there's anything kind of uh, outside of the local area of similar type. Um, in terms of uh, the right tire um, question, yes, uh, there's been no change to that. Uh, proposal currently, it, it would be, this project would create a two-way street and therefore right tires would be expected to be along the um, curb.
Yeah, I, I will offer um, that Bryant Street in Palo Alto, which was the first bicycle boulevard in the entire country. Uh, it doesn't have a semi-diverter at every block, but it has some form of barrier, either um, complete block at the center of the street and various other kinds of drivers in various locations. I believe it's every other block across the entire city Palo Alto. Um, so that's the closest to near, both geographically and in terms of physical configuration example that I can think of. Um, Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Uh, my first question is how was the safety risks concerns addressed? How were they analyzed? And that information was given to me. I didn't see it, but I want to talk about safety and risk. Um, we're looking at the diagrams. Um, there's a lot of liability I can see from, from just blind spots from the residents that live in that area. So if you can talk a little bit more of that and how you guys were able to come up with the solutions, if there were any address. And when you talk about, second question is changes, and I know this, this project included the residents. So with these changes, were the residents privy to these changes and what was the buy-in from them? And if you took their concerns in consideration is um, my question. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So certainly I would, I would appreciate a chance to speak to this um, on the safety front. We um, let me, let me make sure that I approach this right. So um, this project uh, will be installing a significant number of um, enhanced crosswalks for visibility of the, the pedestrians and for motor vehicles' observation of pedestrians. Um, generally, we have a designer on board who is looking at kind of the, the standards of safety that are established under the California municipality. Um, sorry, the Ca- California Unified Traffic Control uh, measures. I'm gonna, I'm messing up a little bit on the acronym, but it's the California MUTCD. I'm awful with acronyms. Um, so we're following that closely and that's actually quite a bit of what came up during planning was to make sure that we were meeting the safety requirements as required by state law. Um, other parts of the review in, do include visibility. So when we're standing at our intersections and looking at making improvements such as these, there, there's quite a bit of attention at kind of visibility from approaching traffic um, in terms of the speeds of cars. All of these go into determining what kinds of traffic control measures are necessary to create a safe um, and accessible um, project. In this case, um, with this project, we're looking also at long-term kind of one-year pilot project evaluation to make sure that these are being met. I will say that there is actually one intersection um, already existing on Adams Street, which is a very similar configuration to what we would anticipate at, at the end of this project, and that's the um, intersection with Adams and um, Clay, the Clay or Castro at the Albany Bowl. So the Albany Bowl is a two-way street coming out from the north from the Orientation Center for the Blind. So it's two ways coming out with a single way north um, on Adams Street between Clay and Castro. And so the this project will create similar conditions such as the one that already exists there and has been successful and safe for pedestrians.
Um, so can I jump in real quick? So I think you're in that question.
Yeah.
A few seconds or minutes ago, you stated about the, the bollards being hit, the, the plastic
Mm-hmm.
Um, items being hit, so speak a little bit about that, because you're talking, you just said that, that the safety was addressed, but how would those be struck? Is that just because they're not measured correctly? Like, how, how can we prevent that from happening on our end? So you don't have to replace them.
Thank you. No, that's, that's a good point. So these things, these bollards can be struck for many reasons. Um, not all of it has to do with specific safety that we can control. You know, if somebody's taking the turn wide, and this, this is why we actually took it to um, our fire department to make sure they can make the turn is, if you're taking that turn wide, you may knock down the bollards, or not you, but specifically whoever's driving may accidentally hit the bollards if you're not paying attention um, when coming up to it. But this is not something that is necessarily outside of the bounds of what may happen on any city project. We, we often replace bollards that exist around the city. Um, our crews go out onto um, Marin, for example, there's bollards that we, we replace quite often. And sometimes it's because of navigation, people are just need to get through um, for various reasons. Um, it doesn't, doesn't really change the safety of the pedestrian, meaning that there's no added risk from the bollards being here because the pedestrian would be crossing the crosswalk anyways. Um, the amount of enhanced crosswalk um, striping, the improvements of signage, this serves more for improvement of safety and providing enhancements to visibility, I would say, than what the bollards are intended for. The bollards are intended more to provide a visual kind of indication to drivers who may take that turn, that, oh, we shouldn't continue the turn. They may start it, but they should, should not cross the crosswalk and continue. Um, the signage does that as well, though. We do have the no left turn and no right turn signage on the approach. Um,
Has this been tested with the vehicle? I mean, has that been something put in place to see? I'm sorry, to be, give me one second.
I think I'll, I'll ask the question. I think the question was, has the placement of the ballards been, been tested in the field?
Right, with vehicles like has, has it been shown, you know, just to give us a, an insight of what the outcomes would be if in different areas?
We, we conducted the, during the two days of testing with the fire department, this was in live traffic. And so the location of the, we put cones out and there was live traffic while we were doing this. And none of the approaching vehicles attempted to turn in, nor did they hit the cones or the cones. But they're in the same locations as where we're proposing to put the ballers.
And then my last concern, as far as the elders, I mean, they're not as, I would say they're, they're, I'm trying to say this nicely. You know, just maneuvering vehicles, you know, they may see blouse, but they're, they're, they're trying to think of a word, hold on. Where they're able to maneuver the cars that, that I guess my question really is, is as far as the elders, my concern is that, you know, by them maneuvering vehicles, trying to get in locations, oftentimes they have a hard time. In most cases, not all have a hard time in maneuvering. How, how are we going to make sure their safety is protected? And that they're able to drive in this area?
Alright, so this, with this, by putting in these ballards, we still have more than half the street open. It's, it's really primarily for reducing the cut through, the ability to cut through traffic in the, what is now in reverse direction. So we're trying to minimize people going the wrong way unless it's a bike, bike rider. In terms of leaving the blocks, which is primarily what would be happening, there's a parking lane and a driving lane of room for, for, for drivers to navigate out of the block. One of the things I, one of the safety improvements, I would say that I didn't mention earlier was that we're red curbing out as part of this project. It's partially for navigation for the, for the emergency vehicles. But I would say it also provides quite a bit of both area for people to navigate, to leave the block for other reasons, like outside of emergency vehicle access. And it also provides quite a bit of more visibility. This is part of our red curb policy already. But we, we paid particular focus on this to make sure there's plenty of room for anybody driving to be able to exit the block.
Okay, I'm on to my second question.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember McQuaid, you have your hand. Oh, I'm sorry. You have another question. I apologize.
That's okay. Go ahead.
In terms of the changes and what kind of outreach was performed, I think we felt that at the level of changes we were discussing that it didn't, didn't impact the functionality or the, I suppose, intent of the project. And so we did not reach out to the local community in terms of these minor, what we consider minor changes to the project.
So what, were the resident, do the residents know about this meeting that we're going to move forward or how? Or if not, why were they not invited to, you know, have their input since they were not a part of the changes that were made?
Sure. These, again, that we thought these were small, minor changes that didn't rise to level. And it was not a requirement in order to bring this item to bid. It was this or to, to this agenda for call for bids, since it's already part of the CIP plan and was, the project itself was approved by council as well already.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Engineer Correa. I imagine there'll be some, some other questions that might come up if you can stick around. And with that, oh, now I see Councilmember McQuaid has her hand. Wait, now we're hands down. You have a question, Councilmember McQuaid?
And now I'm ready to go. Um, I think to kind of carry on with Councilmember Gary's concerns about safety. I, I do have a lot of concerns about the idea of people in the block having to continuously, or at least often be making three-point or four-point turns to get to the parking place on the opposite side of the street. And just, you know, we all drive on those streets. They're very parked up. There's not a lot of maneuverability room for turns. I can appreciate there's room to drive on the street, but turning around is going to be difficult. And it seems like it's going to have to happen fairly often. So I'm just wondering about the safety for that. And thinking about bicycles, as you're trying to ride your bike down the street and cars are backing up and turning around and that seems more dangerous to me than not having that problem. And I'm just, you know, in, in full disclosure, I've, I've never liked this project. I voted against it, I think, every chance I've had. So I don't come at this with the most open mind possible. But, you know, I keep going back to why, why we couldn't just have a two-way street with two-way bicycle ability and not have to do all this fancy engineering and difficult turning and all of, all of these sort of difficult pieces to this. So that's, that's my question.
I will try to answer that the best I can. In terms of the, the alternative of it fully open roadway, two-way traffic in each direction. That goes back to the planning level efforts. I understand there were some community concerns with traffic coming and cut through traffic. And I believe this alternative that's being proposed for the pilot project evaluation stemmed from the desire to stem the, to, to address the cut through traffic concerns. And I'm sorry, I'm going to need a second to remember what the other question you had was.
Down to three-point turn.
Three-point turns. I am not aware of this, any safety study done on that. However, I will say that it is, you know, similarly to my own driving habits, I am responsible for making sure that I approach traffic in a safe manner. And I would say the same applies to anybody making a three-point turn, that they should be making sure that there's no on, oncoming traffic in any direction. And that they plan their actions well in advance to make sure people are ready for the, the turn into driveways or three-point turns within the streets. Similar to bicycle traffic as well, just looking out ahead. If there's more information needed on that, I'm, I can certainly look into kind of see if any studies have been done on that, but I'm not aware of any myself.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from councilmembers? Not seeing any. Seeing four hands raised. State clerk, if you please admit the the first attendee with the hand raised. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to apologize. I might be confused. I, I really just want to speak about the, the bike project on the Cleveland Avenue with the, with the low-income housing project. Is, is that this agenda item?
That is not this item. And actually that item was not pulled. It sounds like you're making a request to have that item pulled. And I understand there was, I could have introduced some confusion at the beginning. So I can go find.
Would you please allow to pull seven five?
Yeah, so I'll pull seven five and we will get to that next. Thank you. Next. Thank you. Welcome.
Uh, yes, this is Brian Martin, a resident of 600 block of Adams Street. Uh, I think we really do need improved alternative transportation infrastructure, particularly with the the plans the city has to put many residents, went many hundreds, if not thousands of residents along Adams and Canes and San Pablo with, with not enough parking spaces for everyone to have a car. So it seems to me that this is something that I know I don't want to write on San Pablo Avenue. I think this, a couple with a bridge across the northern end of Adams would be helpful for people to get around. I see no problem with the multiple blocks of it in a row because we already have multiple blocks of one-way street in a row. So that's not really an issue. What I do have a concern about is the three-point turns that seem to be required. My question would be, is the city allowed to? Or is the, are the police allowed to prioritize? There's a lot of laws on the books. If they went around and, and pulled over everybody for every infraction, it seems like they would get nothing done. So are there ways to prioritize police work? That would make it so that residents in Albany on Adams and Canes can park just like their brothers and sisters in Berkeley have for the last 50 years, which is against the flow of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. You are muted still if you're trying to speak.
Clay Larson.
All right, sorry. I sent a letter on, on, on Friday. I don't believe any of my questions have been answered to respond to Allison's claim. I, I asked questions about the collection of data. This is going to be a trial project. Who's collecting the data? Actually, what data are we actually collecting? I know there's a, there's a excerpted reference from a 2019 report, which includes a kind of a generic list, but are we going to include usage data from San Pablo Avenue, bicycle usage data on San Pablo Avenue? As suggested by the council when the pilot project was approved, have we hired a consultant to collect the data? And if so, what was the cost of that? And is that including the CIP? We're going to need to analyze the data. How will the data be analyzed? Do we have objective criteria for valuing the data? How will the success of the pilot project be determined? And there's a cost to remove the project. The pilot project, it's a pilot project, so it may need to be removed. The Transportation Commission recommended that a budget for the removal of the project, including the removal of the ballers, the signage, the striping should be included, but it's, it's clearly not included. You know, the, the Canes and Adam pilot project was controversial. It, it was opposed by overwhelming majority of the residents on the two streets. The pilot project was approved by the council by the narrowest of margins, a three to two vote. Ideally, the initial decision to approve the project would have been based on, on some actual bicyclist data, but we hadn't done. And that's typical in Albany. When it comes to planning, bicycle planning, we, we seem to adopt that if we build it, heck, maybe they'll come attitude. But this was approved as a pilot project, so it's, it's, it's a trial run. And we'll need data, real data, and we'll need competent, honest evaluation of the data. This needs to be planned from the start. And if it's, we're not ready to start, I think we should postpone this. Thanks.
Amelia.
Yes, hi, can you hear me? My name's Amelia Letpan and I live on the 700 block of Adams and I'm an avid cyclist and bike commuter. And I see a lot of cyclists on Adams Street regularly. And I think that a great draw to cyclists of Adams Street is that you only have to watch out for cars coming at you in one direction. And this plan will change it so that there's cars coming at you in two directions. And I thought the, the whole, the, the whole initiation for this construction was to make Adam or Albany more biker friendly. So that's, that's my question and concern. That's all I have to say. No, sorry, one more question. Will there be any additional plans to help with cyclists and pedestrians crossing San Pablo Street yet at more intervals? Thanks.
Good evening. I'm hoping that the last commenter's concerns are addressed by the fact that people who live on Canes, as I do, and Adams Street will not make those U-turns and park opposite the way they're parking now. I realize the council can't announce it's okay to violate the law and park the wrong way. You can't just say that. But as Brian Martin was suggesting, it could be not prioritized for enforcement. If you look at Google Maps, as I just did a few minutes ago, or you actually go there, you go to Milvia in Berkeley between Cedar and Rose. It's exactly this situation. And you'll see all the cars are pointing south. Parked cars. With our streets fully parked, these are 30-foot wide streets with a car parked on each side of the street taking up between the two of them about half the roadway. It's impossible to make a U-turn in a 15-foot wide, long, 15-foot long vehicle unless you go into somebody's driveway. And then you have to be careful, the angle you go out, that you don't hit the cars, either next to you or behind you. So I'm hoping no one makes those U-turns. On the other hand, people who park in their driveways can exit the street in either direction because it is a two-way street. And again, the previous commenter, the avid bicyclist, you have to watch out right now for cars just going down the street the wrong way anyway, because it is a fairly frequent occurrence. So you do have to check both ways and people will be able to leave their driveways in either direction. As for Councilmember McQuaid's comment, making the street just two-way, which a lot of us don't want. It's a straight shot into El Cerrito Plaza and then down Canes. And it also makes it easier to do cut through traffic. You can see all the cars turning left in the morning that are going south and they got to make a left turn on San Pablo to get to Canes to cut through. It's harder, but they still do it. So we don't want to be a two-way street. We had proposed, residents had proposed the idea of a contra-flow bike lane. So that you have bicycling in both directions on a one-way street and that would alleviate a lot of the issues. But for various technical reasons or whatever, that was not the way the project was approved. So I guess my concern is, is the U-turns. Thank you.
My name's Amy Smolins. I've lived on Canes for about 30 years. I've seen lots of changes throughout Albany and on our very avenue. Bike boulevards have been discussed for at least 10 of those years. My neighbors, including some seniors even older than me and many people that have very young kids, they do support the bike boulevards because of the functionality, as Ms. Correa explained, and the ramifications and the safety. They support it. They understand it will make our street and our city safer for all users of all ages and abilities. To address Amelia's concern, two-way driving is going to slow traffic down due to visual friction. If you drive on Cornell or Stanage or anything, you see that when there's a car that's coming at you, everybody has to slow down. So the two-way traffic will definitely make it safer for cyclists. Right now people speed through. And that's going to diminish. City By has been considering this for years. You and the Transportation Commission, who are experts in this area, they heard all the arguments. They've heard all the rationales. They've heard all the red herrings. They've seen all the photos. They've, they've seen everything and they've decided to move forward with this important, safe bicycling connection for valid reasons. I rode on the Ninth Street Bike Boulevard today in Berkeley. Been riding similar streets since I moved here for almost 40 years ago. Berkeley has a whole, a full network of bike boulevards and it's safer. It's safer for all uses, all, all ages, all levels of confidence. Emeryville, Oakland, other cities have bike facilities. We really need to, really need to move forward with this. Like, like Brian Martin said, that our neighbors have them, we don't. The photo in Brian Martin's letter that really shows you that the contra-flow, contra-flow parking is fine. It's not an issue. It's been going on for 50 years. It works. There's never, there are no issues with that. There are no issues with emergency vehicles. Those are kind of red herrings. This is a big picture item, just designed to facilitate. This is a big-picture item, designed to facilitate bike safety and reduce greenhouse gas emissions and climate change. You mentioned Earth Day earlier today. Let's take long overdue action on this. It's a common sense measure. Make every day Earth Day. Let's try to clean up our air. Let's try to move forward. Let's try to move Albany into the century when it comes to bicycle facilities. This is long overdue. Please move forward with this safety and climate action measure. Thank you.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay? This is Brian Beal. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, as usual. And just a few points about this, a few concerns. Overall, in support of the idea of bike lanes, one thing I wanted to point out about this area is that San Pablo being a main throughway through the area, the streets around San Pablo are often used as shortcuts. So I think having one-way streets on either side was part of the design of the city to keep people from doing that. They tend to use Stanage a lot as shortcuts. So one thing about the one-way, two-way conversion, or what I'm concerned is, is that you may start to see that behavior down on those streets if you can, if you convert them. The other thing, let's see, contra-parking, what I wanted to say about it, because I've seen it happening here on my street, I watch. I'm just personally, I'm a little bit terrified watching it because I'm seeing parents with children in their backseats, but parents with small children in their backseats, they're contra-parking. The issue is, is that the driver's side is on the left side of the car, not the right side. So you're on the left side of the car. If there's a car in front of you, you can't see the oncoming traffic, and they're not expecting you because you're parking illegally. So that's the potential issue. Now, on the other hand, is that a high priority for law enforcement? I don't think so, because we haven't seen the, you know, incidents of accidents. So then we have the other issue. So that's kind of how I feel about it. The other point I wanted to make, you check your California, your vehicle handbook, going, entering a private driveway to make a turn, entering the private property part is trespassing, and it's illegal. And it really annoys me when I see people do it. I've seen, one day I was standing next to my driveway, a guy came in a sports car flying into my driveway at 45 miles an hour. He had no business doing it. He was straight, and there was no need to, because you don't, it doesn't help make your turn faster. So that is my point about that, is people should not, and if we're designing things in such a way that people have to do that, that's alarming. If they can make the turn without entering a private driveway, you know, just coming up to the public right-of-way limit, that's fine with me. So anyways, great that you're addressing these issues. I hope it all works out. Thank you for your efforts.
Mayor, that's it. You're muted.
Thank you, City Clerk. I don't see any other hands raised, as you noted, so we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember McQuaid.
Thank you. You know, years ago, I think probably before any of us were active in the city, the council allowed parking on the sidewalk on Albany Hill. And it became a real problem with people not being able to use the public right-of-way, and it didn't, it didn't work. It took us years to remedy that. So I certainly don't want us to start down that path again of saying, well, this is illegal, but it's okay. We'll sort of blind eye to that, because we've seen that doesn't work well. So I think we need to be sure that we are enforcing the rules, and if people cannot park contra, going the opposite direction of traffic, that's, that's just the state law. And that we should just leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I would also like to thank the public for their comments and providing information regarding this, this issue. There's a lot of things that, the unknowns, that's what scares me. I ride my bike. I'm not against bicyclists, but I don't see any bicyclists on San Pablo. So I'm not sure why we're saying that that is dangerous, because I haven't seen another one, if it is anyone. And I ride almost every week. In my riding, I take alternate routes to avoid the busy highway. So, you know, I think this, this pilot is going to cause some harm to people because of the lack of knowledge, right? You yourself, Mayor, stated that signs, people don't pay attention to signs. That's concerning, and that's something that you stated when I brought up the safety issue. And so I'll just let you know that I'm not comfortable with voting yes on this, because there's so many unknowns. But again, I'm one voice, one vote, but again, I will be not, I'll vote no. Thank you.
Also stupid.
I don't know who made that comment, but please don't do that again. That is not called for. Councilmember Nathan, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Yeah. I, I hear the concerns, I hear very valid concerns. This does seem like a situation where we do not have a perfect solution, and we've been trying for years, since the time I came on the council. We've been struggling with exactly how to make this project one that works. But I'm going to vote for it. I would, I might not be willing to vote for it if it were a permanent reconfiguration, but it is a pilot. And in these circumstances, where there, there is so much that is unknown, I think a pilot is appropriate. It is enormously important that we offer safer alternatives, as Councilmember Gary said, you know, San Pablo Avenue, and I'm a, I'm a low-stress bike person. I bike around town, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't get on, wouldn't occur to me to get onto San Pablo Avenue. But if we don't do this, then we are going to be in a relatively short period of time having to talk about eliminating the parking on San Pablo and creating bike lanes through there, which may, may happen eventually anyway. But by doing this, we are potentially offering a way for people to bike that corridor with relatively low stress and higher safety than they can do now. And if it doesn't work, we, we will have to pull it out and try something else. But I think the time has come to give this a try. And with all the concerns, the valid concerns, I hear you, but I'm, I think that we really do have to try a pilot and see, and learn more from actually seeing it work on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will pass on the question to staff about data collection and analysis. I don't know, staff can say a few sentences about whatever the plans are in that regard?
Certainly. Give me a second.
No problem.
Make sure that I get the right, the right information. So the pre-project evaluation will collect traffic speed and volume on the 700 and 900 blocks, turning movements at the Solano intersections, and bicycle counts south of Portland and Castro, including the San Pablo Avenue locations. Post-installation, a second evaluation will collect a sample at the same locations to get the comparison of before and after conditions.
And will that, that collection will be for all modes? Separated by mode, in other words, walking motorists and biking?
I would need to check in with Transportation Commission, sorry, not Transportation Commission, sorry, Transportation Department to make sure that's correct, but that would be my understanding of it.
Okay, thank you. And to, to go to a couple other comments, I mean, generally, a street that has two-way traffic, the motorists choose to drive more slowly than a street that has one-way flow. So in that regard, the street potentially will be safer than it is now. And to my comment about many motorists ignore signs, the, this project proposes to install ballards. I mean, right now, all that enforces the one-way is signage. I live half a block from a one-way block of Talbot, and motorists frequently go the wrong way down that entire block. We have heard from one of the residents of one of these two streets that they frequently observed motorists going the wrong way. So ballards will likely, but we'll find out from the data collection, will likely provide at least a better visual indicator not to do that, at least a little bit of physical friction that is more than the signage that's there now. Contra-flow lanes were looked at as a, as another option. There's some preference for that among people who bike, but the professional transportation engineer determining the street is not wide enough for that to be safe. And so that's why this configuration is being chosen. One-way streets on the other side of San Pablo, it's my understanding, those were established, I believe, in the early 1990s to deal with the issue of people turning right off San Pablo and then left and using side streets. So the desire is to maintain that blockage through traffic in the same direction as the closest lanes on San Pablo. As far as not seeing people bike on San Pablo, and therefore, why do we need these facilities? The idea is not specifically to accommodate people who are cycling on San Pablo, because very, very few people will do that, to actually accommodate people who will not otherwise bike unless they have a low-stress facility that they can bike through on. There's plenty of research showing that in that regard. There was a question of Albany building this infrastructure for cycling without a clear case and data for the need on the idea that if you build it, they will come. And in fact, data from the American Community Survey of the US Census shows that's in fact what's happening. Albany's been building it, and they've been coming. Over the last decade, the number of people that chose, that choose to bike to work has increased by 40%. The number of people that have chosen to drive to work has decreased by about a third. So this is an X step in that trajectory. And with that, I will leave it, leave it alone. It sounds like we're going to need to pull this for a separate vote, so I will just make a note of that from when we move on. Unless there's any more comments, we will move on to the next item for discussion, and I handle this as a separate motion at the end. That item was item number five, which regards letting a contract for design of storm drainage and pavement, storm, stormage rehabilitation and mapping, actually, on the engineering thereof. Engineering of new or restored pavements and upgraded curb ramps along Cleveland Avenue from Buchanan north to north of Washington. Are there any councilmembers that have questions? I expect probably not, because none of us pulled the item. Not seeing anybody raise their hand or otherwise express. City Clerk, would you please admit the attendee who pulled the item?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm possibly still confused. The reason why I wanted to comment and ask questions was because on the transportation, there was something that passed to ask City Council about the bike pathway from Cleveland to, I think it's Pierce, it's the, the new bike pathway for the low-income project. Is that this agenda item, or is this agenda item just the sewer rehabilitation and something different?
So my, my understanding of this item is that this project on Cleveland would include the cycling facility that would connect from where the cycling facility through Thompson Pier Street Park intersection of Cleveland, from that point to Buchanan. So it does not include the path within Thompson Pier Street Park itself, merely the segment of the, of the path or of the facility that would be on Cleveland.
I see, okay. It's just the reason why I'm raising this point is because I was just kind of concerned that potentially the rest of the $72,000, the sugar sweetened beverage tax fund was going to go toward this project. And it just kind of seemed like a first-come, first-served situation on the sugar sweetened beverage money, when, you know, other commissions haven't even suggested what they want to use the sugar sweetened beverage tax money for. So that's all, I was just, I'm probably just confused on the wrong agenda item. I apologize, Mayor.
Quite right. They're long and complicated, I can attest to that. Thank you for your comment. Presuming that there is no deliberation on the part of the council, we will move on to item six, which was pulled by Councilmember Gary. Councilmember Gary, if you have some questions or points to raise?
I do, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And so I have a couple of questions. I know that the recommendation is to purchase two new vehicles, because it's replacement of reaching, vehicles reaching the end of their service life. So I didn't see in the report the year the vehicles that would be replaced, the mileage on those vehicles. Is this a command vehicle for sergeant? Basically, if I can get, if we can get some additional information about the vehicles that are being replaced, and so that can help us make a decision in order to replace them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Sergeant Curland, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. I apologize if I'm not.
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to be here. So I can answer that question. So one vehicle is a 2015, and the other vehicle is a 2016. Current mileage on the 2015 is just under 66,000 miles, and current mileage on the 2016 is just over 67,000 miles. And the vehicles that would be being purchased would not be in commission for at least a minimum of probably mostly like the 10 months, due to the fact that it's going to take time to wear them. And then also, it takes over a month to outfit each vehicle.
Thank you. So with both of those vehicles having low mileage, is there any maintenance concerns to why we're considering to replace these? Are the officers having issues with these vehicles? If you can elaborate a little bit on that, please.
Sure. So yes, with patrol vehicles, because they are running constantly, they're on all the time, they typically equate them to double the miles. So be, instead of, say, 66,000 miles, you know, you'd be looking at 132,000 miles. Also, with them being gas models, there is a lot of maintenance passed, they're no longer under warranty. So when we have to repair them, that's the full cost of the city to repair them. The warranties are up on both of those models. Typically, one of them, I could tell you, the 2015 is going to need a water pump at approximately $3,000 cost. So we're holding off repairing that in order to replace it.
And the 2016 vehicle, has it received any maintenance issues or concerns, do you?
It has. I could pull the file, and I'd have to pull the file to look exactly what it has had, but it has had, whether it's been involved in any sort of accidents or any maintenance, there will be major maintenance coming up on it as well.
How many electric vehicles do we currently have now?
We currently have three hybrid vehicles. We do not have any fully electric vehicles.
Thank you so much. Is there any way, and this is not to the sergeant, this is to the mayor staff, you know, when presenting these documents, if we can have like maintenance records, just supporting documents to show us outlining, you know, why, what the maintenance records look like, the amount that has been spent so far, to basically justify why we're spending this amount to purchase new vehicles?
Yeah, I would agree. That information would be useful to have in the staff report in the future, to perhaps piggyback with a And to perhaps piggyback with a, a very basic question. Um, how many vehicles are there in the, the fleet of vehicles are used for patrol?
We have a total of eight vehicles, uh, for patrol. Uh, they are shared vehicles. Uh, and so, and then we have one truck that we use, uh, that's a two thousand sixteen that is used for the, uh, off-roading in the bulb area. Uh, for extra patrols. Uh, so there's a little bit less wear and tear on the patrol vehicles themselves. That's what we have, uh, for patrol vehicles.
Thank you. Yeah, and I presume that, as you say, it's every mile is like two miles. Um. Kind of like cat years or dog years. I presume that's in part also because every mile is an urban mile. Uh, there are very few highway miles on these vehicles, I presume.
Y- yes, sir. Uh, the, the miles that do are put on highway are when we transport to jail. Uh, or do longer transports. Uh, most of it is city, so it's stop and go. So, uh, between brakes, uh, suspension. Uh, and just wear and tear on the motor. Uh, also, uh, at a standstill, uh, because they do need to run. Uh, gas-wise, that's why we like the hybrids, uh, because of the electronic equipment that's inside the vehicle. Uh, they need to stay running to keep the vehicle cool, especially during the summer, uh, heat and temperatures. Uh, otherwise, the emergency equipment will not work.
Interesting. So are you raising that, uh, they need to run to keep the air conditioning running? In part?
Both that and keeping them charged. Otherwise, uh, over ship, if the computers are on and other items are on, they can drain the battery. On a gas model.
So it'll be interesting to see if the. That all suggests that the hybrids might. Have a greater durability. Uh, over time, obviously too early, I think. Well, I don't know. How, how old is the oldest hybrid?
Uh, the oldest hybrid is a twenty-twenty. Uh, it's been in service for just under two years. Uh, and, uh, there's been no complaints on it. Uh, it actually, we're getting double the fuel mileage, uh, because of the hybrids. Uh, and we've found most of the maintenance are, uh, at least most of the warranty items on the vehicles. Uh, Ford A covers them. B, they're more cosmetic, uh, than they are mechanical. We have had zero issues with the batteries. Uh, and with their system of charging and the gas motors as well.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see if those, uh. What those look like at sixty thousand, seventy thousand miles, if they're in better shape and have more life. Thank you for being here and answering my questions. And council member Gary's questions. Uh, I don't see any hands raised to comment on this item. I see one hand raised to comment on this item. City clerk, if you please admit. Welcome.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um. It, the figure I see for two patrol vehicles and being outfitted. Is one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh. I, I just found it difficult to believe, so I wanted to just ask you, is that? Right? For two cars? And I notice you. Well, anyway, that's enough for now. Thank you.
Thank you. I will pass on your question to Sergeant Curland, if you could speak to the, the cost of a. Uh, patrol vehicle.
Uh, the, the vehicle has a cost of, each vehicle has a cost of forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and seventeen cents. That's for the vehicle. With tax, we have to pay tax on that as well. Um, that is a state contract price, meaning the state finds vendors, uh, with the lowest pricing. Uh, via contract. Uh, I believe it's one dash eighteen dash two-three dash fourteen B. Uh, and so that is the lowest price for that specific vehicle. Uh, we then have to spend approximately sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars per vehicle. Uh, for the equipment. That's for all the emergency equipment, lights, sirens, uh, computer mounts, uh, everything that goes in the vehicle, including. Uh, the cages that are in the vehicle, um, and the push bumper and all the extra light. So that's included in those costs. So the total is what you said. For, for two vehicles. And the price of sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventeen cents with tax and labor for each vehicle.
Thank you. And yes, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like the hybrid vehicles are working really well. They get double the gas mileage, which is wonderful. It sounds like a one-hundred percent electric vehicle could cause an issue since the vehicles are running. You know, close to twenty-four hours a day. Um. You know, I, I would just say. You know, get a hybrid and, uh. My question is, what vehicle are you thinking about getting? Um. What hybrid vehicle are you thinking about getting? And the last thing I want to say is. Um. It would be kind of neat if the Albany police eventually had one of those cyber trucks. You know, but, um, yeah, so. So those are my questions.
Thank you.
So the vehicle is a Ford Explorer Hybrid. Um, it has a three-point-three-liter hybrid motor.
Thank you. Welcome.
Kathy Wright?
You are in the meeting if you would like to comment. Yes, now I can, now we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, is that better? Yes. So I was able to dig up, thank goodness for the wonders of the internet, a number of, um, records that. A couple of websites were able to give, such as police score dot com. Um, so it, I noticed that less than five percent of arrests are violent. My question to you, there's three of them. The first one is, how much, how mu- what percentage of arrests are made with a warrant? Second of all, will the police expenditure, you mentioned last time, Mayor Jordan, that we can't expect the expenditures to match with the budget. So my second question is, do you expect that expenditure to keep at that level or is that just a blip? And then the third question is, are you going to be able to appoint people to the commission that, um, Greg Downs was bringing up? That should have been appointed or at least in the process of finding applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, unfortunately, I think all those questions are off this agenda item. Um, I see a positive nod from the city attorney. I think perhaps the third question could be asked under item eight, which we'll be getting to next. Um, so if you. Want to come back and comment again by all means, otherwise I'll remember the question and, and make sure to, to bring it forward at that time. Um, welcome.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to, uh, comment as a outside consultant working with several police departments in the Bay Area. I'd like to say two things. One, the cost, uh, as the police officer mentioned, um, is, uh. In my opinion, questionable in that the fact that. When you have what the state requires as opposed to what's actually needed, you're in a one-mile radius. I don't think you really. Had the opportunity to really dive in and forecast what that means. When you have vehicles running all day or, or however you do it in police work. There are points when you are after perpetrator. There are points when the cars are parked. There are points that you have to engage with, um. The residents, you should be doing that. And that, in a one-mile radius, does not justify the, uh. The, the, the points brought up in having a new vehicle. Maintenance would probably be your best bet to minimize the cost because. Maintenance for police vehicles, uh, they've run competitive or comparable to what state. Mandates require. That is the first point. Point two. Uh, you must realize that in this age right now, technology is king. And with police, as far as police organizations. The. Money is better spent toward utilizing more. Up-to-date technology and placing them in vehicles as opposed to requiring a whole, a, 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 a vehicle without. Just getting the vehicle and the technology. You get the technology, you can place it in the vehicle because those standards have been. Uh, placed in vehicles now to go out to extend to at least, I believe, twenty-twenty. Twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-twenty-six, I believe. So I would ask that you take that into consideration before you vote on any expenditure. That is going to exceed what you already have. There's questions about the budget as it is, and I think. Um, if you take a deep dive into evaluating these kinds of things or this issues particularly, you'd be better off. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands raised. Bring it back to council. You know, if there's any further discussion on this item. Yes, council member Gary.
So thank you, Mayor Jordan. Is there any way we can get the items that I requested prior to, to approving this? That way. We can have the information readily available for all of us to dive into and to, to support, um, the replacement of these vehicles.
Um, I think that's probably a decision for the council as a whole, not for me. Um. But we can take this as a separate item when we get to the end of the consent calendar and, uh, see what the, the council's preference is. Um, with that, we'll move to. Item eight, if my notes are keeping, keeping track from my brain, which I think they are. Uh. This regards the amendment of the resolution or proposed amendment of the resolution to establish a policing commission. Uh, are there any questions from council members? I think council member Nathan, um.
I pulled this, um, solely because I know that we've got, uh, a lot of people here to comment on it.
Okay. Uh, Vice Meritina man.
Um, yes, uh, I have a question. This is all, uh, you know. Uh, um, in anticipation of the discussion tonight, as we all got a lot of emails about this. Um, so I'm gonna share my screen with some language, uh. And a question for staff about, uh. If we substituted this sort of language, uh, for the one clause, uh, that had a real substantive change about. Um. Where the authority lies for appointing the, uh. Independent investigator, um. Would, just in general, would this sort of language work? Where would this land us back with labor negotiation? Um, meet and confer, uh, and that sort of thing.
Thank you. I'm just giving a pause here to read and contemplate. So my understanding of the effect of this would be that. A recommendation by the policing commission regarding whether to have an independent investigation. Of a complaint. Um, would. Be considered by essentially upper management, uh, city staff, but then would come to city council for an ultimate determination as whether there would be an independent investigation or not?
Yes, that, that is the intention here.
Okay. Um, staff, I don't know if you're willing to, well, weigh in on this, uh, this proposal.
Sure, and I'll do it in coordination with our city attorney as well. Um, you know, on first review, the language looks reasonable and something that could be implemented. It demonstrates the partnership and. Still continues to reflect our form of government. So I appreciate the work that went into it. I do believe that out of respect for the process, as noted in the original resolution. Um, it should go back, uh, for additional meet and confer, just to affirm that this language works. And I would call it if you'd like to add anything there.
Yes, I was just going to confirm Nicole with, with what you just commented, that I do think it could work, but that we would want to go back, um, and just. Review this final language as part of a meet and confer process before the council adopted it.
Thank you. The answer that I knew I was going to get, but a valuable one, all the same.
So I think that suggests. If the council were to take action. Well, it suggests like a few different potential actions the council could pass a resolution as it is proposed on the agenda. Um, it could pass the resolu- well, or it could. Maybe not pass resolution, but ask for this version or the version with this language to go back to meet, confer. Um, I don't think that can happen without an action of the council. Uh, and then of course is the option of not doing either. Does that seem like a reasonably framed three options there, looking at council members? Okay.
That sounds right to me.
Okay, see at least two nods. And. I guess with that, were there any other questions from council members? Uh, I'm sorry, I see council member Gary, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So my first question is, I guess that, the. The main concern is, why doesn't, why didn't it go back to the task force to address this? If there was an issue or concern. Regarding the direction that was prevented, presented in the first resolution, the opportunity would have been able to tell the task force members that it's not gonna work or whatever the case may be. And have the task members address it at that time to make it to where it will work. I, I, I don't like the fact that it, it kind of looks like in public that we look, we went behind the scenes to make changes without even consulting it. That's exactly what happened. And so now the task force and along with the public. Has an outcry because they feel that we have, um, how can I say this? We have duped them in a way that is beneficial for us and not for the community. So I'm a bit, um, appalled by what has happened and rightfully so. The community should be upset because. You can't vote one way and then all of a sudden decide that you want to change at the last minute. We have put the task force together to deal with this issue. So with that said, um, I'm gonna be. I would like my, my suggestion is that we bring this up with the task force members and we work together. That's transparency, not going behind the back doors and making changes. Transparency is all of us working together, the community working together, and we, and we do what's right for the community. That's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. There any other questions? Not seeing any. City clerk, if you could admit the first attendee with their hand up. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Matthew Hamady, and I am a member of the Community Task Force on Policing. As well as an attorney specializing in defense of the rights of marginalized groups. In the report of the task force submitted to council in September, we specifically and emphatically warned against stripping the independence from the Oversight Commission, writing, and I quote. "Any authorization for investigation should rest with the city council and not the city manager. Since doing so would rob the city of anything close to a transparent investigative process." And yet that is exactly what this amendment seeks to do, intentionally creating a weak civilian review board. Which according to the director of the ACLU's Justice Division, is worse than no civilian review board at all because it gives the illusion. Of independent accountability but actually provides none. In other words, the task force's hard work and the community support that catalyzed the creation of this task force. Will end up making the city less safe for the most vulnerable among us, including my own black children. The proposed amendment is an affront to members of the task force like myself and compassionate members of the Albany community. Who demand a change and are instead receiving more of the same racist status quo. Most importantly, this amendment is an insult to people of color who have courageously spoken to this very council about their horrific experiences. Being repeatedly racially profiled and harassed by Albany police officers. I beg you to imagine how frustrated and hopeless these brave community members must feel. When white council members somehow continue to claim in the face of their heartbreaking testimony, well, there's no evidence of policing problems in this city. Where in the world is your empathy or at the very least your shame? Apparently, white council members getting called out in the Chronicle for enabling the racist status quo in the face of genuine suffering. At the hands of police by our black friends and neighbors wasn't enough to affect council members' minds or hearts. As journalist Justin Phillips wrote, a pattern has emerged in Albany. The city's former black mayor, Janelle Gary, presents legislation focused on racial equity. And it gets picked apart by the. and it gets picked apart by the predominantly white council. Tonight, I myself am ashamed to even be indirectly associated with this council through my participation on the task force, naively believing the council was sincere in its effort to tackle racism in policing. And I vow to work alongside the Albany community members who truly care about racial justice to ensure that any members of the council who approve this resolution will be voted out. Racism and cowardice should have no place in our local leadership, and the most vulnerable among us deserve better. Please simply instruct staff to issue the application for seats on the Policing Commission without the shameful amendment. Additionally, for the sake of transparency, which is ostensibly the goal here, the council must recognize the obvious conflict of interest implicated by the Albany city manager being married to a police officer whilst administering a police oversight program. If not as a matter of law, of conscience, this is the absolute least you could..."
Your time is up. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is KZ Zapata, and I live in Albany, and I am a member of a community-based organization called Albany Uprising. In preparing my comments for tonight's city council meeting, I went back to May 2020 when the visual visceral and horrifying images came across our screens of the public murder of George Floyd. I'd like to ask everyone at this meeting, if you can, to take a moment to go back there and find those feelings of rage and the resulting conviction that we can and must do better in our society to honor and protect black lives. In the months that followed, people in Albany gathered in front of City Hall on the corner where this council symbolically stands. Tonight's vote on creating a policing commission for the city of Albany must hearken directly back to that day when George Floyd was killed and the calls for justice as it relates to policing were elevated. The city of Albany is a hostile place for black and brown people. We have heard these stories time and again, and in addition to listening, let us believe the people that tell their stories in our meetings and public spaces. Creating an independent commission that reports directly to council and does not go through the city manager nor the police chief is critical, particularly in a community where so much work is needed to be done to reckon with the past and repair the harm that has taken place. Albany's police force is a direct link to this past. I want to also mention the peril in having the authority over investigation sit with the city manager and not counsel. Having a process that is almost internal in this case is not a public process. Add to this, to this the fact that our city manager, Nicole Almaguer, is married to a police officer, and this does not bode well for a transparent public process. It does nothing for the sense of trust that is required for healing and the advancement of justice. Although I'm not here representing the Social and Economic Justice Commission, I speak merely as an individual. I do chair the commission here in Albany. Our work to address the, quote, "social and environmental issues that are created for inclusion in Albany" is outgoing. Each commission meeting, we spend time to hash through the ways to give the sense of black and brown people belong here, belong in Albany, despite the redlining and explicit ways that the city has stigmatized or systematized exclusion. Isn't this, after all, an issue of the environment, as the state of the air of our city for black and brown people to thrive, breathe, and exist here? What we must do, this vote tonight is part of doing better. We can and we must, and I urge you to maintain the integrity of the original resolution. Let's get the Policing Commission off the ground and working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is Judy Kerr. I'm a member of the Finance Advisor Commission, and I'm also a past member of the Social and Economic Justice Commission. I did a fair amount of work with the the equity issues related to the issue of policing and police oversight. I want to thank Vice Mayor Tiedemann, who kind of jumped in front of the conversation with a compromise. Respectfully, I appreciate the efforts of the elected officials and the staff present, particularly city manager Nicole and city attorney Malas Abramian. We really are at a critical point here in our discussion about policing in Albany. And it, I appreciate the difficulty of the conversation. It's a really, we're laden with, with mental health issues, we're laden with racial issues, we're laden with, with a complexity of, of issues related to policing. But really, what's at issue here and what we really need to be talking about is how do we have a community where we can be sure, where we can really have confidence that when something happens in our city, which it will, it will happen with our policing department, with our police department, with our, with our city? How do we know that we have oversight, that we have the requisite involvement of the community in this process? And at this point, we really don't have that. We really need to move to a place where we can be sure that as a community, we are confident that we have a police force that's necessary and, and a police force that is responsive to the complaints and the concerns of the community. If we can't tonight come to a conclusion that allows us to have that confidence, I have to ask the question of the council, of the city attorney, of the city manager, of the police department, of the, of the entire community. Are we really entitled to have a police department? Should we not just simply contract our services out to a community such as the city of Berkeley, where there is a independent oversight for the police accountability? Are we really entitled to have a police department if we can't assure that we have safety? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, this is Margie Marks. The people of Albany have been asking for an independent oversight of the police. And is this too much to ask for? I don't think so. The Nonpartisan League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emoryville has taken the position that they, quote, "support police accountability through independent oversight." In the last election alone, Oakland, Measure S I, eighty percent of voters approved an effort to boost oversight of the police force, including hiring an independent lawyer. Sonoma, Measure P, passed by more than two-thirds vote to increase the power of the county's independent oversight of sheriff's office, including increased budget and require the sheriff to cooperate. San Francisco, Prop D, sixty-seven percent of voters approved independent oversight of sheriff's department. San Francisco, Prop E, seventy-one percent voted to scrap mandatory minimum number of police officers. San Jose, Measure G, seventy-eight percent voted to expand the independent police auditor's oversight. Berkeley, Measure XI, citizens voted five to one to scrap existing police commission and replace it with a nine-member independent oversight body. So I don't understand, you know, I, I've heard that there was negotiations with the police union, and maybe that had something to do with it. I just want to say, all of these other cities have bigger, batter, and stronger police unions than we have. And if these other cities are able to do it and negotiate with their police or whatever they do, the city of Albany should be able to do that, and, and I hope that you would work on it. We're asking for independent police oversight, and like I said, I don't think that's too much to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Lehman. I'm a resident of Albany. I'm a member of the community-based group called Albany Uprising. And I appreciate you letting me speak at this meeting. I hope you, members of the city council, were listening to Councilmember Gary and the many residents who've spoken so articulately and carefully before me. I wrote to all of you about my thoughts on what you've done to eviscerate a process that should have given us transparent, independent oversight of accountability for all city employees with the involvement of the community in that oversight. In this case, it seems to me that unfortunately, the city council's interest seems not to be in the best interests of the people of Albany. The proposal was revised in a kind of backdoor move that I don't really understand, and I'm very disappointed by. In such a way, the proposal that was revised, that the intention of the original proposal passed by you, the council, and asked for by so many of us in the community to have a process in place of independent review for accountability for our city employees, like the police or the city manager, that that was effectively nixed. So very disappointing all around, because one loses faith in people entrusted to do their best for the residents of Albany. This was an opportunity for us to demonstrate that we can be that more progressive and welcoming community, which is so needed in these difficult times. And we have so far failed to be able to do that. And I feel sadly that we have been failed by you, the city council. And I, I feel really badly about it. And as Councilmember Gary alluded to, this, this kind of backdoor stuff is really deeply horrifying. It's just what we don't want, and I'm sorry to see it happening in this instance and several other instances too. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Welcome. We are not hearing you at the moment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Brian Johns. I'm a resident of Albany, and I was a member of the task force. I'm calling you to urge you not to adopt the staff-mended resolution regarding the commission as this seemingly minor change represents a significant difference to the intent of the task force, which, which was to provide the citizens of our city with a fully independent mechanism to review and investigate complaints against the police department. That goal cannot be accomplished with an amendment that calls for some type of approval from the city manager, the police chief, and the city attorney, rather than from the commission and ultimately the city council itself. That power of review should be held by citizens, not bureaucrats, regardless of their talent or disposition. That was the intent of the task force, as I understood it as a participant. And while I would never suggest that I speak for anyone else, I can say that I never heard anything suggesting the contrary from my fellow task force members during our year of work on this issue. So instead, simply implement the resolution that was passed months ago by the council and direct staff to immediately begin the application process for the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome back.
Yes, thank you again. Actually, hearing all the other comments, it actually makes a lot of sense. I mean, I don't think the people running the city or the police are bad people, but unfortunately, there's a lot of bad policies that allow a lot of bad decisions for profit over people. I mean, I have heard firsthand testimony of how the police ends up coercing people into giving up their Fourth Amendment rights because they're just complying. They're just trying to, you know, do as the police say, because they like to think that the police are still there to serve them. But after they've been traumatized, a lot of us now feel like we are overpoliced and underserved, because frankly, people are afraid to call the cops now. Because I looked at some of the numbers, and the status quo has been maintained. Albany is fifteen times more likely to arrest a black person than a white person. Okay, since 2013, nine years, there have been no complaints against the police sustained. That sounds quite odd to me. You know, and it's quite normal for police to question Albany residents for over an hour, including young children, as, as if they're fishing for a reason to arrest. Because when I saw the analytics and I saw the numbers of arrests and how regular it is, it looks like there's a status quo being maintained. It's probably not an official, it's probably not an official rule, but it sure looks way too regular to be something that's just this random and reasonable belief. So if we don't find out how many arrests were made that were with warrant or as a result of calls and then questioning, if we don't see these and if there's no citizen oversight, and we are leaving it to a city manager married to a police officer and then consulting the chief of police, where your budget has ballooned seventy-one percent in two years, and they're spending like reckless teenagers, unaccounted, unquestioned. You're not even going to convene for the finance budget for the police budget until May, which is less than a month. Then you're going to pass it in June. This completely flabbergasts me. I mean, is this a status quo that's going to be continued to be maintained? Because one of the other numbers I found out is, of the less than one percent of cities that do have an oversight commission, less than ten percent of them actually have citizen oversight. So the police union or whoever the powers that be do a successfully good job at gutting any kind of task force to get accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, the last speaker, she's right. It all does make sense now. This is starting to, you know? There's a big conflict of interest with the elephant in the room. I mean, a real big conflict of interest. Wow. I didn't know all that. But trying to stick to the story here. Can you put up a slide to what we're talking about? Because we can't pass a slide how it is. I mean, this whole, this whole thing should be with the police review task force. I mean, there's a lot of discussion with the police department from, from the community. So that's even more of a reason to create this policing commission. You know, and, and also that encourages public participation in meetings. You're gonna get the whole town to finally participate and come to a policing commission meeting. You know, it's a good thing. But we can't just let this pass tonight as a contract. Oh, thirty days. Well, then, then the city manager and the police department is gonna be like, oh, well, you turned it in past thirty days. They're just gonna use that as an excuse to not want to investigate. You can't put thirty days up there. There should be no restriction. If anything, it should be what, two years? Mala statute limitations, two years, right? And the public should have a right to take the police to court. The police will take you to court for a traffic ticket. You gotta show up in court. We, we should be able to show up in court with the police officer as the, you know, on the other side. And, and the judge can make a decision. You know, not, not the city manager and, and you know, her friend investigating. That's a big conflict of interests. Wow.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Nick Pill, Albany resident. I simply want to speak again. I simply want to speak against the change in the resolution to transfer investigative authority over investigations back to staff. This goes against the spirit of a truly independent process and would make the process ineffective. Please heed the words of Dr. Greg Downs. Professor Downs is somewhat of an expert in these matters and I trust his opinion and I, I asked to look at his letter very closely and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Brian Dos.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Dos. I am trustee for the Albany School Board and a member of the Albany community. Embedded in laws and regulations of society or an organization, it manifests as, it manifests as discrimination in areas such as criminal justice, employment, housing, healthcare, education and political representation. If you're wondering what definition I just read, it is institutional racism. Now, if I was to come up to anybody on the council and ask, hello, my name is Brian. Do black lives matter to you? Each one of you would look me in my face and say, yes, absolutely. Some of you even come to the events that are held by black members of the community. And you sit there and clap and smile and tell me that my life matters and that the person next to me that looks like me, their life matters as well. Juneteenth is a holiday. It wasn't a paid holiday when you all passed it because that was just too much. The point that I'm making is when it comes to just words, you all say the right things. But when it comes to actual action and then when it comes to an actual vote that is going to move the needle and that is going to show the world and show the members of this community that Albany is not indeed racist, the votes are always the same. And the backwardsness is always the same. Let's not look racist in public, but let's do the racist stuff in closed session. Let's not be racist in public, but let's change this around to make it work. We all know that the city manager handling that piece is a conflict of interest, being married to a police officer. I mean, I would hope that it would be a, a conflict of interest because if it was my spouse, 100%, I'm voting with the police every time. And it'll continue to be another nine years with no complaint being followed through. So what I ask is this. If you are going to pretend not to be racist in my face, then also pretend not to be racist when you're voting. And let's actually get some stuff passed that's going to protect all members of the community, even the ones that don't happen to look like you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, this is Greg Downs. I'm calling, I've been, been traveling, so I'm just on my, on my phone and trying to, to watch, to read the amended resolution. So I don't want to get into the weeds with that since I'm just, just got off the plane. I'm reading on my phone. The two things that I really appreciate, um, all the speakers and all they put in, and I do appreciate council stepping back from the uh, version that was on the, or at least I hope, so, you know, following through and stepping back from the version that was on the agenda. The two pieces that, yeah, that I really want to emphasize are first, the centrality of, of independence, which does mean that the authority needs to weigh to rest upon council um, and not in the hands of a city employee. Uh, my colleague on the task force, Brian Johns, and others have made this, this point very clearly. Um, and the second that I do want to emphasize, uh, that, that I, I didn't hear, although I possibly missed it, um, anybody emphasized yet is timeliness. Um, you know, the, this was passed in October. We're now in April. Um, I do understand the reasons why the sort of work of completing staffing of it um, hasn't happened yet, but I, I do really want to urge you to find ways to start the process of getting nominations so that there is not a lapse between time, between the task force as it exists um, in this commission. And I do believe, and I do believe it's been stated previously at council meetings, that that ad can go up, even if certain details of the commission um, need to be voted on again after some vetting. And it is something that I think is really important. I don't want, uh, you know, that given that council members need to take time uh, to review applications, given that people need time to find out, given there are legal requirements of delay, which is, uh, you know, for to accept applications, which is good. I really want to urge you to think about how to get this moving. And I do believe that keeping independence and getting this moving will create a position where we can start to build a relationship of trust. So I appreciate all your work on this issue and I really hope that we can get to those two pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, this is Brian Beal speaking on behalf of myself as usual. Um, without taking sides on the merits of, of which way you're going on, I just wanted to comment on what I see as a big red flag in the process is the fact that you, it's now, it's 9:15 and you're still on the consent calendar. That's an indication to me that something's wrong with your process. These, two, two of these items should have been separate items on, on the agenda because the fact that there's this much public comment, this much opposition says to me, you know, what's going on? This should have been a much more time allowed for this. So I think it sounds like, and there was the comment, I guess, that uh, council member Gary made about what seems like, well, a perception of a backdoor process. Uh, I'm not familiar with all the details of what's happened, but the fact that something that's such a controversial change is coming out on the consent calendar indicates to me there's something wrong with the process. And you should look at the planning process for these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. You're on mute. If you are seeking to talk, Tom Newton.
Now, how about now?
We can hear you.
My name's Tom Newton. I'm a 50-year resident in December of 9/22 Santa Fe and a member of the police task force. And I'm so disappointed to see this item on the agenda tonight. Um, it's, it's, it really rips the, the heart out of the idea of an independent body. And I, I questioned whether it was planned and whether the sneakiness of it was planned by the city manager. It's disturbing thought and I'd like not to say that, but you say one thing and then we do another. Um, it's discouraging. I, I will be very disappointed, more than disappointed. If, if you approve this change, and I also wonder like others, why the city manager doesn't recuse herself because of her marriage to a cop. It would mean a lot, you know, to us if you did, but likely won't. And did the city council get briefed by the city manager before this was on the, on the, the agenda? What was discussed with the police officers' union that needed to necessitated the change? Um, what did she go in there with? Uh, in an attitude that it had to be watered down? Um, there's certainly state laws that, that protect officers' rights and I understand that, though I may not agree with them. They're not gods, they're just cops. Um, but is that the reason things were changed? Uh, if so, why wasn't it explained? Why was there no explanation in tonight's agenda? I just, I, I'm very disappointed. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any additional attendees there. Ah, yes, other attendee, city clerk. Welcome.
Hi, this is Bridgette Acuna. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I, you know, I simply, I really can't speak more articulately than so many have. This is a wow. This is a wow. And I'm, this is so disturbing that the city manager's partner is a police officer. And like the last speaker just said, recuse, recuse is a minimum. This seems illegal. This seems beyond wrong. And that there is no explanation. You had to know that this was a conflict of interest. You had to know that. I have not been tracking this particular issue. I've been focused on others. I'm shocked. And you know, what people have said about, you know, this duality, this, yes, we care. Yes, black lives matter. And then this comes up? That's, this is disturbing and I actually think there should be more action related to this conflict of interest. It's, it's, it's the issue of the resolution is obviously one thing and we should not have conflict of interest. Absolutely not. The whole point to this whole effort was to have independent oversight. And there were so many examples of other cities that, that have successfully done this. Then there's this issue of what I think is, is I, I, I don't know what the words are, but I think it's illegal and I think Ms. Almager, if I'm, if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, it's not a question of recusing yourself now. If you knew. So I think that you should resign immediately. There's no question in my mind. I don't think anybody on this call now would be confused by that. This is disturbing. This is wow. This is horrifying. After all this effort, it comes to this, a back, backdoor shift in language? Wow. Do better. You know, the rabbis talked about moral and ethical values. The rabbi talked about random routine acts of kindness. You have hurt us now. That's, you've hurt us now.
Thank you. Welcome.
Uh, yeah, I, I just want to emphasize the, uh, lack of transparency and, and explanation about the meet and confer. Uh, the fact that the city meets and confers with the cops and with the city attorney, but not with the, uh, citizens appointed by the council on the subject. Also, the number of cities that have been mentioned that do have some kind of policing commission uh, found a ways to do it legally. So I'm wondering how the city, how much the city attorney has conferred with the other cities attorneys to see how they managed to do it and not be scared off by potential, uh, legality. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Give us some. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, good evening. Jocelyn Lockham, an Albany resident and member of the task force. Um, in October, the council passed a, a version of the resolution as was originally envisioned uh, by the task force members, um, which made the request to investigate directly to the council um, as the representation of the, the will of, of, of voters. Um, the, the proposed change really is a substantive change, um, both procedurally and structurally to what the task force, um, really envisioned and was set forth to, to achieve. Going back to what some of the previous co- public comments reflected, I, I, I think that the, at, at the core of what we were trying to achieve here was independence and transparency. And those two functions really as the pillars to build trust with the community. And so, um, with all that's already been said, I, I just want to encourage the council to take the opportunity here to really solidify trust with the community by rejecting the, the, these, uh, uh, the revisions here and going back to the, the, the true intent that the task force, um, set forth to achieve with the, with request investigate going to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking at the attendee list. I don't see any more hands raised at this moment. Bringing it back to council. Yes, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Uh, thank you. Um, and just a, a note of appreciation for everybody, uh, for calling in and making yourselves heard. Um, we do appreciate, and I'm, I'm sorry for any frustration you've been caused as part of this, though it was certainly uh, not our intent. And it's, these, these conversations are always hard because it's very hard to express the sort of inside view that I think we get versus the one that is seen on the outside, especially when just due to the nature of some of the lawmaking that is happening, especially in this conversation, a lot of it happens in sort of legally mandated closed session. Um, and so it can be very hard to really express how much work is going on to make this a reality and how much legitimate actual, uh, you know, effort is going into this. Um, and I really just want to emphasize that it, it is, I think this is a case of our institutions not um, being ideally suited to the task, which is not any person's fault. It's that, you know, normally when we have something that affects the, uh, work that any union of ours does, it goes to meet and confer, it's negotiated and it comes back to us in this form and is passed uh, without much discussion because it's usually a lot easier. This is obviously a case where it's a much higher profile item. It is much more difficult to do. It's not something that Albany has done before, nor that Albany is, you know, ideally suited to do. We still want to do it, but it's something that our existing practices need to sort of expand to, uh, get, to, to really make it happen. And sorry, just trying to organize the thoughts here. Um, and I think there are some, some good notes from that, what we've seen of, you know, that this is really the only substantive change. Every other change that I think was made was really just clarifying how the resolution would work. Um, which is indicative of a good relationship with our peace officers' union. As well as the work that's gone into making it happen. I'm really sorry that it has been delayed this much, but it's a process we need to go through to ensure that the, that it can be instituted, that we don't get sued for instituting it. Um, and that we make it happen in a way that can really be implemented. I, so with that said, I think I'm hoping that the language I offered can be passed because what we've seen here is, is that we went through the process that we need to go through to, to do this and we have a full-throated response from the public that this is not a compromise that we can make, as was offered from the meet and confer. And so we need to come back with something stronger that maintains, uh, what, what the task force wanted to do. Um, so I'm hopeful that we can do that by saying this isn't a compromise we can make. We heard from people. Um, and we have to go back and meet a little bit more about it to make it fully happen. On just a last note, this was mentioned, uh, I think by Greg Downs. I think one other thing we can do tonight is, uh, have a little bit of discussion and hopefully endorsement of getting the application process for the commission, uh, off the ground. Um, uh, I think that's something that if we agree on it, then can happen. Um, and would show that we are serious about this, as I know we are, uh, and would start at the ball rolling towards this happening, even if we have to have a couple more discussions about the exact wording here. Um, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Um, I saw the city attorney raise her hand first.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just wanted to add about to the process discussion that Vice Mayor Tiedemann referenced. As you might recall, at the last meeting, we're As you might recall, at the last meeting where you considered the resolution. You authorized the resolution subject to the meet and confer process. The meet and confer process is. Found under the Myers Millius Brown Act and requires the city as the public employer. To meet and confer with, with the union in this case. That process is done, um, through negotiators. And is held on the city's part through a closed session process. So that is how the city and other cities have handled the, the legal process, and that's how it was conducted for the city of Albany. Um, in addition, I wanted to, uh, comment on numerous references to conflicts of interest. The city manager does not have a conflict of interest and can participate in this discussion and can participate in the process should you move forward. With the resolution going forward, and I'm happy to answer any other questions about the process and next steps.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I will note that they, the council as a whole forwarded the resolution. Um, as it appears in the agenda, uh, in the closed session, that was the action that it took. Um, yes, Councilmember Nathan.
Uh, I think that Councilmember Gary was ahead of me in the queue. But, oh, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Nathan. I was ahead of you. Um, you know, I, I think the most interesting part about this, this meeting. And I'm not going to take too much time is that. When we started this process back in October, I was a designated member on the task force from the council to have conversations with task force member. But this, it, it, and this is the second time where another council member has. Put in language that he felt was best for the council instead of consulting with me because I was the designated person. For the counts, for the task force. But that's neither here nor there. I think that the, the residents have spoken. I think that if we can go back and try to. As a council, not one council member, but as council, come up and speak with the city attorney as well as the attorney. That's involved in negotiations and come up with a better language to, uh, work with. I think that would best suit the, the cit- the city residents. But if you decide you don't want to do that, that's simply up to you. And, and I'm gonna say two more things. It's interesting how everyone wants a form of accountability until it comes to them. No one wants to be held accountable. But they are always putting in places that someone is being held accountable. I don't get that. The second thing is, is that if we don't get ourselves together, people have spoken. As leaders, we must remember, we are elected to serve them, not them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nathan?
Yeah, I, I also want to thank people for speaking up, you know? Uh, I've been on the council for, uh, about eight years now. I started a little bit early when a. Uh, mayor, um, passed away in office. Um, and I only recall receiving, you know, actual complaints from the public. Uh, receiving such complaints twice. Um, and one of them was the fairly recent complaint from, uh. From, uh, Mrs. Doss about, you know, police observation of, uh, of a group of, uh. Of black people who were thought that apparently they thought or she thought were being. Observed by the police and it turned out that it was, it was a misunderstanding. So I'm really happy that people, you know, that this commission. My hope is that people are going to bring these concerns forward and they're going to come. Uh, through the, the commission and eventually reach the council. And I appreciate, um, Vice Mayor Tiedemann's suggested change to the language. To me, it's a clarification. I don't know about other members of the council, but it was never. My intent in voting for that, you know, in, in, um, supporting this. That the council would sacrifice its, uh, prerogative to. Hear the citizenry and respond to any serious complaint that would come forward. It was, it, that, to me, that's a given. But it's also a given that we need to hear from the chief of police and the city manager. As well as whomever else we need to hear from. That, that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to be listening to people and processing this and, and responding to it. Um, I'm very comfortable with what Vice Mayor Tiedemann has, has, uh, suggested. I'm a little bit. Concerned that I, I think everybody came here with their statements kind of riled up and ready to, you know. Blast what was before us. And people weren't really responding to what we have on the table, which is what, uh. Uh, Vice Mayor Tiedemann put on the screen for us. I'm willing to vote for it tonight. I'm willing to kick it back to the task force. Uh, what it does concern me, and I, I think there needs to be clarity. If we don't normally have people serving on, on more than one body at a time. And, um, so we need to, to understand if there, there might be members of the task force. Who want to serve on the commission and, and, you know, want to apply for that. And I don't think that they should be. I don't want to adopt a process that would, uh, preclude them from putting themselves forward as. Potential members of the commission. So, um. You know, I'm, I'm, uh. If, if people want more time, more process, I think that's fine. Um, and I, I'm fine with going forward with appointing people if we are clear on, you know, we have a clear. Uh, uh, and, uh, have adopted a rule, which, you know, may take another hearing. On whether we're going to waive the usual procedure that people serve on only one, uh, city body at a time. Uh, which is what I understood was what we've been waiting for, waiting for the task force to, to finish everything that it needed to do. Put, you know, an end to that and then, uh, start the commission, which might include people who have, have served on the task force. So that's, uh, I guess my, my bottom line here is I'm willing to defer to the people who have been, uh. To Councilmember Gary and Vice Mayor Tiedemann, if the two of them can come to a, a meeting of the minds about the next step, I'm. Pretty much happy to defer. But, uh, I have to say this, it seems like a lot of sound and fury about pretty much very little, uh, really a, a, a wording problem. And, um, I also want to say, I, I don't think there's anything at all wrong with city manager Almager. Uh, happening to be married to a police officer. Uh, that was never a secret. I don't know who. You know, it, it may have been that there were people who were not aware, but. You know, it's, it's certainly never been a secret to the council. If she were married to. You know, a, a civil rights attorney who sues cities over police misconduct, that would be fine too. Uh, if she's a member of, uh, you know, if she's married to a teacher and we're working with the school district. If, that's okay. These are not conflicts of interest, and I'm not sure, uh, why, why people are. Uh, I, I'd like to get a better understanding of why people think that, that it is a conflict of interest, but I see no reason to believe that is so. Uh, thank you. I will, I will let, uh, Councilmember McQuaid have her say, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McQuaid.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Erin, thank you for this. It's very similar to something I. Scratched out on a napkin this afternoon, so I, I think it's a good compromise. I mean, it does give council the ultimate control, and I think that's what the community wants. And I, and I think it is important as. The commission evaluates things that they get the opinions of the professionals, the city manager, the city attorney, the chief of police. And then it goes on to council and whoever's on the council will be making those, those decisions. Um, I'm happy to approve it tonight. It's, if it needs to go back to me and confer, that's fine. I don't know what the value of sending it back to the task force would be. It would still have to come back to us and then probably go to meet and confer, so I would just, just move this forward. Um, and I want to thank the city attorney for her comments regarding a conflict of interest. I have to say, I'm absolutely appalled at the public comments, um, regarding the city manager. I think they were. Obviously, they were wrong. They were uncalled for. They were not kind. They were not any of the things we've talked about. And I, I'm just, I'm not sure what to say. I'm just thoroughly appalled by them. And, um. Nicole, I think I'd like to give you my apology. You had to sit through that. It was, it was not fun, and it shouldn't have happened. So I think that's, at this point, all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other? Comments or thoughts on Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Um, a, a process question, I think, from all of, if we. Uh, amended language, uh, tonight, and would we be passing the resolution or referring it? Back to meet confer? What, what would be the, the thing we are doing?
I think you would be recommending that the, uh, version that's in the packet with potentially the revision that you, you screen shared. Um, be brought back to a future meeting for adoption, should the, um, meet and confer process move successfully? And it would really just be that li- last item that you screen shared because everything else had, had been moved forward through the process.
Great. Um, in that case, I'd be ready to make a motion to that effect, but I don't know if there's other discussion to have. And also, our mayor has not chimed in.
Yeah, um, yeah, I am interested in this suggestion of going. Um. In front of the task force for its consideration. Um, I wish that suggestion had come forward before, but we're, we're here now. And, uh. I think much like the racial equity survey. Um, that the process is important, and there's been a request to have it go back to the task force. And I can see the need for that, how that might help a little bit with a small bit with, uh. Healing some of what's been transpired. Um. I don't know what that will mean, though, if the task force makes lots of changes and then it goes back to meet and confer. You, you know, I, I don't know where the endpoint is. Um. I do have some concern in that regard, although the task force. Has been authorized to have one more meeting, so I suppose that would be its, its last pass. Um, at this, as far as, um, creating the policing commission, I'm not supportive of doing that until we actually know. What we're creating them. To do specifically, um, in terms of having adopted a, a resolution and, uh, also avoiding the, the potential problem of. Having applicants who are already serving on a body. Um, maybe once the task force has sunset, that will make more sense, even if we are still in process with the resolution. So those are, those are my thoughts to, uh, refer it. We could refer it with the. Um, language that Vice Mayor Tiedemann has brought forward, um, for the task force's consideration. Would be an option.
And I'm willing to second, uh, Vice Mayor Tiedemann's motion so that we have a, a live motion on the table, if that is helpful.
I don't think he's made a motion, but okay.
Oh, I thought he did. I'm sorry.
I think he was entertaining a motion. I think he was.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like I, I heard that right. Um, Councilmember McQuaid.
Thank you. I just have a process question as this is part of consent. Should we move the rest of consent, holding off on seven, four in this one and start making motions from there? Would that make sense to people?
That. Thank you. Thank you for speaking out from your level of experience. I appreciate that. Um, I think probably we need to pull seven, four and seven, six.
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, is that right? Seven, four, seven, six. Right, and seven, eight. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So excluding seven, four, seven, six, and seven, eight.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councilmember McQuaid and seconded by Vice Mayor Tiedemann. To approve the consent calendar, accepting seven dash four, seven dash six, and seven dash eight. Any discussion? Seeing no indications, city clerk, will you please pull the council?
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
And Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Moving on to seven, four, this is to, um, approve or take other action with regard to letting a contract for construction of the Keynes and Adams Bicycle Boulevard. Uh, pilot. Anybody like to make a motion?
I will move the item.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councilmember Nathan and seconded by Vice Mayor Tiedemann to approve letting a contract. For construction of the Keynes and Item, uh, Adams Bicycle Boulevards on a pilot basis. Is there any discussion? City clerk, if you please pull the council.
Councilmember Gary?
No.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
No.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you, seven dash six, which regards, um, purchasing two, uh, new patrol vehicles for the police department to replace existing vehicles. Is there any emotion on this item?
Uh, I'll move the item.
I, I thought, I'm sorry, excuse me, Vice Mayor Jordan. I thought we were just asking for additional information prior to, to moving it. That way we can have everything outlined for us to vote on.
I'm, I'm happy to vote on it now, so I would, I would second Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
So it's been moved by Vice Mayor Tiedemann and seconded by Councilmember McQuaid to approve the purchase of these two vehicles. Um, Councilmember Gary, you could offer a substitute motion if you'd like.
Well, basically just to make sure that we have information regarding the purchase of the, the new vehicle. As far as like the, the maintenance records on the old vehicles, um, everything that Sergeant Kirkland presented, if we can have that, that'd be great outlining what was. Go ahead, Councilmember Nathan.
Yeah, you know, I was going to suggest, I'm, I'm, I don't think it is really, um. Uh, appropriate for the council to be studying vehicle by vehicle, uh. Uh, what's going on with maintenance records and so forth. But I think that we should have, certainly have a written policy. As part of our, uh, finance department's, um, policies and the policies and procedures that they are developing. That lays out what our policy is on, uh, vehicle replacement, uh, with some specificity. So I would, uh. Uh, if the maker of the motion would, uh, uh, be amenable, I would suggest that we. Um, uh, it include direction to the staff, uh, to, um. Uh, to ask the finance department, um, when, as it develops policies and procedures. Uh, for our, for our finance work in the future, that that include a policy on vehicle replacement, a written. Policy that, uh, that could be reviewed by the council.
If you will, uh, indulge me, Councilmember McQuaid, almost did it again. Um. Uh, city attorney, I, I look to you with that, the suggestion of the amendment to. Um, the motion, we're really in discussion on the, the first motion, just we don't have a second on a substitute motion. But the, um, substitute motion that was made is the suggestion of the amendment. Would that be within scope of the agenda? Which the suggestion was to add a policy direction to city staff to, to develop basic guidelines for when vehicles would be replaced.
A, a written policy as part of our financial policies.
It doesn't sound like that we're making this approval contingent on that, but it sounds like that's something you would like. To come back at a future meeting, and maybe that would be the, the scope that it could be done is just that. maybe on a consent item, if, if it's the pleasure, it'd be brought back to create a policy for, for update of, of certain large items.
And it's only a direction to staff and my guess is it's part of the plan for, you know, this is a very standard item in written financial policies and procedures. Vehicle replacement is a, is the kind of policy that typically you develop and adopt when you adopt written financial policies and procedures.
So that's, I think, a request for friendly amendment? I don't know if the motion maker accepts that amendment or not. Well, wait, I know, I think it was by, well, I don't know, actually, who are you making me, who are you making it to, actually? I guess it would have to be to the motion that's on the table since we don't have a substitute motion. Was that your intent? Was to amend the, the motion that's on the table?
Yes, to add direction to the staff to develop a written policy on vehicle replacement. Uh, to be incorporated into, uh, the financial policies and procedures or whatever other policies or procedures might be more appropriate within the city system.
Thank you. Um, city manager, I did see your hand go up and down. I'm gonna presume, okay, all right. So Councilmember Gary, uh, I'm happy to second your motion to get more information. And I'm wondering if you would entertain a, an amendment to also provide policy direction to staff to develop a written policy regarding vehicle replacement.
I agree with that. But I, but I mean, as a whole, when we're outlining the budget or when we wanna purchase things, I mean, shouldn't it be best for us to have the, everything written for us? I mean, even now, we're just paying for something and we don't have written documents to support while we're paying this. I mean, I think as taxpayers, don't you think transparency and letting, letting the, the residents know where money is going and why? I don't know. That's just my take on it, but it sounds good.
Yes, I think if a written policy is developed, it could, include guidelines about what information is brought forward. So the motion that's on the table is to table this pending the receipt of additional information regarding the, repair needs of the vehicles. And I don't know if there was other, I'm sorry, I can't remember if there was other.
I thought we had a motion on the table to go forward with the staff recommendation and that I had made a, uh, a friendly amendment.
We have.
That I had offered a friendly amendment. Uh, and I thought that was vice.
Is the vehicle gonna break down within the next couple of weeks? With our, when we have our next meeting? I mean, can we wait? Can we table it until April 18th? That way we can have all the documents? I mean, but if it's gonna break down prior to, then we can move forward, but we can hold off 18th, that would work.
Procedurally, the substitute motion takes precedence and we have a substitute motion on the table.
Okay. Yep, that's right.
And that substitute motion is to table this item pending the receipt of additional information as described. And believe the, the amendment was accepted by the motion maker, similar to the amendment that Councilmember Nathan um, suggested on the, the first motion, which is to ask staff to develop policy, written policy regarding when vehicles get replaced and what information will be considered and brought forward in doing so. So unless there's another substitute motion, which seems highly doubtful, uh, we'll go ahead and vote on that substitute motion. Uh, city clerk, if you would pull the council.
I'm sorry, is there a second or is?
Thank you. It's, uh, yes, no, no need to apologize. Hard to follow. Um, I am the second.
Can you read the motion one more time, please? Thank you.
Okay, I will try, but it's your motion, so please correct me if I have it wrong. So the motion is, I understand it is to table this item until next meeting. At which time, uh, further information will be brought forward, uh, such as regarding the mileage of the vehicles, um, the repair needs of the vehicles. And, and then also, uh, asking staff to not bring it back by the next meeting, but to, to start developing a written policy around when information will come forward, when vehicles need to be replaced and what the, what the criteria are for vehicle replacement. I think we're ready now. City clerk, do your magic.
Okay, um, Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
No.
Councilmember Nathan?
You know, I'm, I'm gonna abstain on this because I, I just feel it's not, I think it's perfectly appropriate for concerned city council members to ask questions like this of, of the city manager, but I don't think it's appropriate for the council as a whole to be going through mileage and maintenance records. So, so I'm going to abstain.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
And, uh, Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
So the motion passes.
And with that, we go on to item seven dash eight. Does anybody wanna make a motion? Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Just to give a, a thought of going forward, I am happy to move this forward tonight because I think we, we can, we have the, the opinions of everyone has been made pretty clear. And I think once we get through this, you know, passing this resolution, getting it through meet and confer, it's not a done conversation. There will be, you know, the Oversight Commission itself, part of its job is sort of look at how it can improve itself and what it needs to be effective. So if down the line, we find we need to make more amendments to this that can be handled by the people we appoint to it. So with that, I'm gonna suggest, and I'll put the language on the screen so we can see it if I can find it, that we, refer, uh, the resolution in item seven dash eight, with the amended language as pictured here, uh, for, uh, additional meet and confer to be brought back to us.
I'll second now.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Tiedemann to forward, um, the resolution as it appears, attached to the agenda with the addition of language that is shown on the screen that he developed and seconded by Vice, uh, Councilmember McQuaid, um, to forward this to meet and confer. Um, again, there is the opportunity of a substitute motion. I will offer the substitute motion that this be, that this language, amended to the version of the resolution attached to the agenda, be referred to the final meeting of the community task force on policing for its consideration. It's looking like that motion might die for lack of a second. Is that, that's a second, all right. And then seconded to, uh, for the resolution as it appears in the agenda with the additional language to the final meeting of the community task force on policing. Is there any further discussion? City clerk, if you would please pull the council.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
No.
And Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And whoever said I did a bad job, uh, figuring out what should be on consent and what should not. I, uh, I second that now. Um, I'm living and learning as I go forward. Um, in any case, we are done with the consent calendar.
That might be the all-time record of long consent.
That could be. I might be able to remember one in my couple decades of following the council, but I'm not even sure that takes 20 years and obviously I'm not doing my job very well here. Um, but with that, I will move us on to the next item, which is a public hearing regarding potential resolution number 2022 dash 32.
Mayor? Excuse me, can I take five minute break? Please?
That probably seems warranted.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just jump in and say, I think you're doing an excellent job. I think in all the confusion over the motions, you, you nailed it. Thank you.
Well, I try to, I try to compensate where I can, so thank you. All right, yeah, everybody, uh, we will go after five minutes. Thank you for seriously a break, Councilmember Gary. I think it's been five minutes. I, uh, I can't swear by it, does everybody else think right here? So I guess it's been five minutes. We'll say it's been five minutes. I would say if and before we proceed, given the, the nature of the next item could also be lengthy. Um, I'm gonna ask at this point, so we don't have to interrupt the item, uh, for a motion to extend, or I'm gonna make a motion to extend to 11 o'clock.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting from, uh, scheduled 10:30 meeting time to 11:00 PM. Is there any discussion? City clerk, would you please pull the council?
Councilmember Nathan?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
And Councilmember McQuaid?
All right. That, back to the script here.
Councilmember McQuaid voted yes?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Extend it to 11.
And so with that, uh, we move on to a public hearing regarding potential resolution number 2022 32. This proposed resolution necessity by the Albany This proposed resolution necessity by the Albany City Council would declare that acquisition of the easement interest for maintenance of a cross located on a portion of Albany Hill Park, as well as removal of the cross itself by eminent domain is necessary for the elimination of a potential establishment clause concern and to provide for an unencumbered public park within the city of Albany. With this, the hearing is open. I ask the special counsel to please explain the nature and scope of the hearing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. My name is Scott Dickfirth. I'm with Beth Best and Krieger. I work with the city attorney Malasupramanian. Today, we're here to discuss a proposed resolution of necessity regarding the potential acquisition and filing of an eminent domain action to acquire the easement interest regarding ingress and egress for the maintenance of a cross that is maintained in the Albany Hill Park. I will be providing a presentation and overview of what this procedure talks about, but before I do that, I'd like to call on the city clerk to state for the record the mailing of the notice to the easement holder.
Yes, I would like to call your attention to attachment three to the staff report, which is the notice of hearing to easement holder and the proof of mailing notice sent to the Albany Lions Club, Lions International on March 11. And it was received by them by the confirmation that Albany Lions Club had received the said notice by responding with a notice of apparent in opposition opposition as seen in attachment four.
Thank you very much. And just to take that comment and move into the presentation, a notice to the easement holder in this matter was sent out. We had received a letter back from the Lions Club, the Albany Lions Club. That letter is part of the overall packet that was provided to council and is and is set forth for your consideration in this in this hearing. With that, as I mentioned, we're here to discuss a potential resolution of necessity to file an eminent domain action and acquire an easement interest. The real property affected by the proposed acquisition of the easement relates to an existing cross situated on a portion of Albany Hill Park. The address is the west side of the 700 block of Taft Street. It's lots one through 18, block eight, and it's a plat of the Cerito Hill, city of Albany, and the county of Alameda. The APN numbers are 66-2754-14-5 and 66-2754-40-3. The proposed acquisition consists of an easement interest only. In this particular situation, the city already is the fee owner of the park. When the city acquired this property in the seventies, an easement was existing on the property. Let me share my screen here just to orient everyone with respect to what it is that we are referring to. Hopefully, everyone can see my screen.
We do.
Okay, this, these are a couple of pictures of the cross as well as the location of the cross that are located on the Albany Hill Park. So this is just simply to provide some orientation about what we are referring to. As I mentioned, this was a an easement that the city took over. It's not something that was granted by the city, but rather took over when it obtained this property. And as you can see here, this is a grant deed for an easement that grants to the Albany Lions Club, Lions International. The easement is fairly straightforward. It's an easement for ingress and egress to maintain an existing cross standing on a portion of the following described premises. So for purposes of the resolution of necessity, as well as any eminent domain action that would be filed, this is what would be acquired by the city. It's this easement interest. So to be clear, there is no property or fee interest that the city needs to acquire because it is already the fee owner. Rather, it simply wants to acquire the easement in order to have an unencumbered park in its city. And so, let me provide one other. We talked about the location of the property. We talked about the recorded easement. I simply just wanted to provide an aerial view so that you had an understanding of exactly where we were talking about. These are two aerial views. I know that they're fairly expanded here, but you can see the Albany Hill Park. So that's the area that we're referring to. Now, for purposes of a resolution of necessity, there are only a handful of things that need to be considered by the council. In fact, anything outside of these handful of things are not to be considered by the council. So for instance, if there was a dispute about how much the city was going to be paying, if there was going to be a dispute about alternatives that the city could address instead of eminent domain, if there was a dispute about whether or not the easement holder was given an opportunity to accompany the appraiser, those are not items that are of consideration in adopting a resolution of necessity. There are only a few things, and let me go over those. Whether or not the public interest and necessity require the proposed project, whether or not the proposed project is planned or located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. What essentially that means is that the city shouldn't go out and over acquire something that it doesn't need that injures private parties unneedlessly, sorry, needlessly. Number three, whether or not the real property to be acquired is necessary for the project. Again, this goes along the lines with they want to provide some safeguards so that the city isn't going out and acquiring property that it doesn't need for a particular project. Number four, an offer of just compensation has been made to the owner. And number five, which isn't always needed, but in this particular certain circumstance, it seems applicable. To the extent any of the property interests sought in the subject is subject to an existing public use, and that's the case here. The city must find that the public use for which the property sought to be acquired and described in the resolution of necessity is more necessary public use to which the property is appropriated. Now, it's not entirely applicable here, but we wanted to include it because we are dealing with a situation where the city already owns this property and does use it for a public use. And so all we're really doing is furthering that public use. And so as I'll talk about in just a few minutes, this prong is in fact met as well. So it's not something that's necessarily applicable in all situations, and it may or may not be applicable here. But in an abundance of caution, we wanted to include it because it is met here by the city. So let me talk about these factors and what the acquisition means to each of those. First, the public interest and necessity require the proposed project. In this particular case, the goals of the city is to provide for an unencumbered park for its citizens. Additionally, it wants to attempt to avoid any sort of establishment clause concern. As you know, there has been some litigation that has arisen because of this cross. We want to avoid any sort of future litigation in that regard. Additionally, the city's goal wants to be able to provide a park to its citizens unencumbered from any sort of easement restrictions that may be a part of it. And so the public interest here is to provide both of those things. And this acquisition is required in order to meet those goals. Second, the plan, the project is planned or located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. That prong is satisfied here, too. This property is geographically located in the city park in Albany. The area of primary focus is the easement interest that we discussed related to the existing cross situated. That's the only thing that's being acquired here. And this property is needed in order to accomplish those goals. We're not going out and acquiring other properties. We're not going out and acquiring other interests. So the city has satisfied this prong. The real property sought, moving on to the third prong, the real property sought to be acquired is necessary for the project. In order to provide an unencumbered park for its citizens, as well as to avoid any sort of establishment clause concern, the acquisition that allows this cross to be maintained should be condemned. This project is needed in order to accomplish those goals. Again, you may hear some alternatives to that, and there very well may be alternatives to meet project goals. But one of the goals here for the city is to provide an unencumbered park. The only way to do that is to allow for the city to condemn out the easement, adopt the resolution, and allow the easement to no longer exist on the property. Therefore, this Albany park would be unencumbered in future restrictions. The fourth prong, an offer of just compensation was made to the property owner. Here, that in fact did occur. An offer of just compensation to the owner was made pursuant to Government Code Section 7267.2. The offer was based on an appraisal prepared by Scott Delahook, who is a certified general appraiser. The offer of just compensation was provided to the easement holder specifically to the president of the Albany Lions Club, Lions International, as well as their attorney. This offer was provided on November 12, 2021. The easement holder has acknowledged receipt of the offer by way of email dated January 12 and by way of letter dated February 15, 2022, both of which were received from the attorney representing the easement holder. So that prong has been satisfied. Finally, the fifth prong, as I mentioned, this isn't always applicable in situations, but here, because the city is a fee owner of this park, what we're trying to accomplish here is to create more public space. In fact, this is actually an issue that bodes that bodes in the city's favor that was raised in the Lions Club letter. One of the things, one of the public projects that you can utilize, or one of the the things that you can utilize in order to make a public project is to to convert a private use into a public use. And that's exactly what's occurring here. We have a park that's generally speaking used by the public, but there is a private easement on it held by the Albany's Lions Club. And so we are converting that private use into a public use so that it is unencumbered for all of the citizens of Albany to use that. And so to the extent that the fifth prong is applicable here, that prong is also met. I do want to take the opportunity to address some of the issues that were raised in the Lions Club letter. And as you know, the Lions Club is allowed to speak on their behalf, and they very well may raise these issues, but I did want to bring these issues up in the letter, which you've all hopefully had an opportunity to review. If you look at it, the primary focus of the Lions Club is that they think that the city should actually sell a portion of the park to them so that they can maintain the cross in order to avoid the establishment clause problem. And I'm not going to disagree that that in theory does avoid an establishment clause problem that has been used in other cities elsewhere when they've had religious symbols on their, on a public property. And what they've done is they've sold a lot of land to this private entity that keeps it, keeps the the religious symbol there, and it avoids that establishment clause problem. That's not the only means in which to avoid an establishment clause problem. But additionally, a stated goal of the city is to provide this unencumbered park. If you were to take the Lions Club's alternative of selling a portion of the park to the Lions Club, that actually reduces park space for the city of Albany as opposed to increases park use. Right now, what we have is we have a park that has a certain restriction on it, a certain use that it's allowed on it in order to maintain that park that at times can cause some obstructions for people's use on it. So, so the alternative would be to actually reduce public space. And so that's not one of the goals of the city in doing this acquisition. So while it might avoid an establishment clause problem, that in and of itself doesn't mean that eminent domain is unlawful, but it also doesn't accomplish the goal of getting more public space. The other, the other issue that was raised by the Lions Club is whether or not there's this project that's in place. That is again bolstered by this thought that there's, there's no project needed because you could simply sell this property to the Lions Club. Again, the city's not required to sell property to the Lions Club in order to do that. And if they so choose, they can adopt the resolution necessity to attempt to get that. But I do want to point out that in the Lions Club letter itself, it says a public project under eminent domain law presumes that the public entity needs to acquire private property to build a public improvement or to change a private use to a public use. And as I mentioned before, that's exactly what we're trying to do here. We want to take the private use of the ingress and egress of the maintenance of the cross and turn that into a public use for the park. To kind of bolster this and to make sure that I provide counsel with a complete record of everything, allow me to read a couple of statements here for you that shows the support for this type of thing. As summarized in the staff report, eminent domain must be justified by a contemplated public use of property. To ensure that such justification exists, a city must, among other things, adequately define or describe the project it plans to undertake in the resolution necessity. There is case law that supports that. The term project, although not explicitly defined in any of the statutory list of definitions, is essentially the legislature shorthand for the public use of property, i.e. what the city is going to do once it acquires the property by eminent domain. In this particular case, what the city wants to do is it wants to use it for a public park. The word project replaces a variety of terms formerly found in comparable statutes. It's intended to apply to any type of public use regardless of whether the use is active, you know, something that requires construction of an improvement or passive, something that rendering appropriation of property in unimproved conditions. The legislature adopted the shorthand project throughout the Code of Civil Procedure and requires the contents of the resolution simply to speak in terms of public use, which is a general statement of the public use for which the property is to be taken. And so here, there is a public project. The city wishes to take an easement that's on public property and dispel of that easement in order to have an unencumbered public park for its citizens. So that's the theory brought up by the Lions Club, I don't think provides any sort of justification for not moving forward with a resolution necessity in this particular case. Going on and kind of providing some further buttress for this, the Lions Club indicates that the city hasn't adequately defined a public project, but there doesn't appear to be any sort of challenge as to the sufficiency or the specificity in the resolution of necessity, but really rather raises other points such as not liking the alternative that the city selected. In other words, they simply want to maintain the cross there and have the city sell them a plot of land. And that's just not something that the city is required to do. In other words, if it wants to provide this unencumbered property, it can, and it's not required to sell its property. The other issue that's primarily raised by the Lions Club is whether or not they had an opportunity to to accompany the city's appraiser when the city's appraiser conducted his investigation. The city did, the city's appraiser did travel to and view the cross and the Albany Park. The Lions Club raises Government Code Section 7267.4. That's actually not an applicable code section. If you read that section, it doesn't have anything to do with this. We think the Lions Club meant to cite Government Code Section 7267.1 based upon the comments that they've made in that. But a couple of things that I want to call to your attention. That Government Code section relates to relocation of property. That's not applicable here. In fact, relocation is not something that's dealt with in resolutions of necessity or in eminent domain. That's not something that That's not something that the city needs to take into account. It's not an applicable code section for the adoption of a resolution of necessity. Additionally, that code section, as, and as reiterated, uh, by the Lions Club, relates to a property owner. Uh, this relates to relocations where property owners need to have their property or their business relocated. That's not the case here. As I mentioned before, the city is in fact the property owner. Um, so this code section, even if it was applicable for one reason or another, it, 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 it simply is not something that, um, that is justifiable in, in, in allowing to have happened. Um, moreover, and, and really quite the nail in the coffin on this one is, is that Government Code Section seventy-two seventy-four specifically states that Government Code Sections seventy-two sixty-seven through seventy-two sixty-seven point seven. So this would include the Lions Club reference. Create, now quote, create no rights or liabilities and shall not affect the validity of any property acquisition by purp-, uh, by purchase or by condemnation. The legislature again speaks to this issue and has indicated that the code sections in, uh, Government Code, sixty, uh, seventy-two sixty-seven through seventy-two sixty-seven point seven are simply guidelines and they're not requirements for the city to follow. So I, I, I do want to make sure that, um, that I allow any time for questions if there are any. But in short, the city has met its obligations um, under the Government Code in order to validly adopt a resolution of necessity. It would be the city's recommendation that the city, um, consider adopting a resolution of necessity and adopt Resolution Number, uh, uh, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two as outlined in the city staff report and as that resolution exists in the staff report. And so with that, i- if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Special Counsel Didforth for the thorough report and coverage. Are there any questions from council members? Not seeing any. Um, City Clerk, could you please note all written objections, protests, and requests to be heard that have been filed, received, read, and considered?
Yes, we receive, uh, from the Albany Lions Club, Lions International, a notice of appearance of the Albany Lions Club and opposition to a res- resolution of necessity condemning the cross on Albany Hill. And as I mentioned before, it's an attachment four and we received it on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, City Clerk. Is there anybody who is attending? Who has an interest in easement who wishes to be heard at this time? I believe I see a hand from the attorney for the.
Um, Mayor, if I may, um, for all those, uh, uh, public co- all those speakers making public comment, if you could please lower your hand first. And we are taking testimony from first from the, those who are representatives of the Lions Club.
So if you're not a representative of Lions Club, if you could please take down your hand. Thank you very much. I see one attendee who has two entries, but same name, um, as their hand raised, so I guess it'd be good. Let one of their iterations in, please, City Clerk. Welcome. You are on mute if you are seeking to speak. If you are calling in by phone, you can press star six, I believe, to unmute.
Let me try the other.
Okay.
Let me try again.
Thank you. Exercise our patience at this important moment.
Hello. Thank you.
Hello.
I, I assume you can hear me now?
You're muted. I don't know if you are speaking though. We cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Um, yes.
Yes.
Wait, as her hand raised.
Okay, my name is Rob- Robert Nichols and I am joined today by my co-counsel, Richard Covert.
Mayor Jordan, uh, Mr. Nichols is speaking.
I didn't know if you had a helpful tech tip there, maybe. In any of this, we still not, we still cannot hear you.
Um, Mayor Jordan, we can all hear, uh, Mr. Nichols. I think it may be.
Shows that you are not muted, but we are unable to hear you.
You can't hear me?
There's something wrong with Mayor Jordan.
Other people.
She can hear me.
Ah, this is my problem. All right, I'm going to leave and come back. Because that happens with Zoom, I find. I apologize.
Are you back?
I am back. I apologize for that. Not an auspicious moment for technology to fail me there.
Well, that's okay. We have a little bit of a backbeat on this side as well. Um, Mayor Jordan and members of the council. My name is Robert Nichols and along with my co-counsel, Richard Covert, uh, we represent the Albany Lions Club. Uh, I'd like to ask if the council has had an opportunity to read our opposition. Um, I see three coun- four council members indicating yes, and I see if not. First of all, I'd like to, uh, address the staff report and some apparent errors there. In, on page two of the staff report, uh, item number one indicates that negotiations have, quote, stalled. In fact, on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, I sent a letter to Mr. Didford indicating that the Albany Lions Club had been empowered to hire, uh, counsel and also to hire and obtain a independent appraisal. And Mr. Covert is the attorney that we have hired and we were in the process of hiring an independent appraisal. At no point had we indicate, had we even begun negotiations, let alone allow them to stall. Secondly, the report indicates an item two that the owner has requested the city proceed directly to eminent domain for tax or other advantages. The Lions Club has done no such thing. I have no idea where that comes from or even what that means, frankly. I, I'm here to provide just a little peek of history. The Lions Club constructed this cross over fifty years ago at its expense on private property. The property was subsequently sold to a developer who wanted to produce the condominiums on Pier Street. And as a condition of that permit, the city insisted upon a dedication of property to the, to the city for a park. The developer accepted the property conveyed by the owner, Hubert Call, and accepted it with the easement. The city then accepted the property from the developer. The, uh, the property was subject to an easement at the time that it was accepted. Now, the United States District Court for the Northern District of California held that the city must bear responsibility for any, uh, First Amendment Establishment Clause violations, that the city should have and could have rejected the deal. The easement is valid and the First Amendment Establishment Clause clause runs only against public entities, not against private entities. The city must re- must remedy its First Amendment violation. The Lions Club, it suggests that there is a simple, inexpensive, and quick resolution to this problem. And that is merely a s- selling to the Lions Club a small plot of land upon which the cross rests. The, this is the solution that was suggested by the United States District Judge. This is the solution that was adopted in San Francisco for the Mount Davidson Cross. This is the solution that was adopted in San Diego for the Mount Solidad Cross. And the other benefit of this proposal is you do not have to pay the cost of acquiring the property. The Lions Club is willing to work with you and convey the easement over o- other parts of this, of the property i- in exchange and as a consideration for a small piece of property with the cross resting upon it. If you had visited the site, you also know that the cross is located uh, very near the end of the property. It is not centrally located and that it does not, that the severance of that small piece of land would not detract significantly from the park. The city's the city is, I'm sorry. Must act fairly in assessing the, this resolution. And the obvious logic of saving the money and quickly resolving this um, is compelling. The city must act fairly and the city cannot act in a fashion that would be prejudicial to the Christian cross for the benefit of other religions or for atheistic purposes. Consequently, the best interests of the city are saving itself what would be well over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars as your appraiser estimates. And there will be attorney's fees and costs added on top of that. I think each member of this council can think of better things to do with seven hundred and fifty to one million dollars or more uh, of money that the, uh, the city would have to pay. Also, I think that there are serious issues with the appraisal. The cross is not necessary for the project. The appraisal is seriously flawed and may in fact result in a, in a payment of substantially more than what is suggested in this resolution. I'm gonna turn this over to my co-counsel, uh, Richard Covert, to discuss several other issues.
Members of the council, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, just a word. I spent forty years in public practice representing, uh, various public agencies and eminent domain actions. And I retired a number of years ago. Uh, and I've taken a handful of cases which I was interested in. This is the first time I have ever represented a property owner. So what I'm about to tell you is what I would tell you if I were representing the city of Albany. There's a number of things where there's major problems with a resolution of necessity in this particular case. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, I've handled hundreds of eminent domain cas- cases. Among them is that the fact that the Albany Lions Club has the right to contest the, uh, city's right to take this property. We're entitled to a trial on that issue before a judge. And before the city can condemn this property, it has to establish that there is a necessity for this project. On the face of the very announcement of the, uh, resolution, the justification for the resolution is a potential First Amendment problem. And to clear uh, the city's title because the Lions Club easement is over a number of lots. That's the, 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 the reason that city said for this condemnation. Both of those problems can be solved without condemning the Lions Club property. There must be a necessity for the condemnation. There is no necessity for this condemnation on the facts of this case. Why? The First Amendment problem goes away if the city simply sells at very minimal cost to the Lions Club. The lot that the cross stands on. There is no more First Amendment problem. The justification, the necessity for this condemnation evaporates, it disappears, and believe me, when we have the hearing, a full board trial on the city's right to condemn, we will vigorously pursue this. The second thing is you have to find that this project is planned in a manner that is most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. The city proposes to condemn a cross that occupies about four square feet, six square feet of this park. And on the face of the Delahook appraisal, it's going to pay five hundred thousand dollars for that? How is that the greatest public good? I've been sitting here listening to these proceedings. You have, you need police cars maintained or repaired. You've got public safety projects that need to be done and yet your attorney says the cost of this is irrelevant. I beg to differ. The greatest public good inevitably involves cost matters. This problem can be solved without any cost to the city. Given that the, the Lions Club has proposed a simple, cheap solution, there is no greatest public good here. There's no necessity to spend any money. We're gonna raise that to the trial court judge. Now let me address the practicalities here. Given the COVID crisis, you can't get a civil case to trial in the Bay Area. Because the criminal cases have preference, they have to be tried. This, the, the, the Lions Club is going to challenge the city's right to take this property. It's going to take three to four years to get a trial date for that hearing. Three to four years. Three to four years, nothing will be resolved. What happens? The trial court will make its ruling, and it'll either rule in favor of the Lions Club or in favor of the city. Suppose it rules in favor of the Lions Club. And there's a serious question here as to whether you have the right to proceed with a condemnation, given what the Lions Club has proposed. I would be giving you the same advice if I were representing you. What happens is suppose the trial court says, well, the city doesn't have the right to condemn this property. The city has two possibilities. Can accept that judgment, it'll pay the Lions Club its attorney's fees, and it goes home. But you're left with the same problem you've got now, you've still got that cross there, and there's still a potential First Amendment problem, you solve nothing. You can appeal the case, fine. Suppose the Lions Club loses, we will certainly appeal it. That appeal is going to take another year. So you're looking at four years before you get a decision on whether or not the city has the right to condemn this cross. Four years. Suppose eventually the city prevails, and it's going to take another year or two to get the case to trial on the valuation. The Delahook appraisal says this property is worth $500,000. But there's a problem with that. The problem with that is there was only one real comparable sale in that whole appraisal. Mr. Delahook spent about two pages discussing that, and that's the sale down in San Diego of the cross site down there. And well, he should have. He said, based on that sale, and that's the only real comparable sale, and I've tried over 50 condemnation cases. Based on that sale, he says the value of the Lions Club property is between $550,000 and $700,000. What do you think the value of that property is going to be five or six years from now when this case eventually goes to trial on valuation? It's going to be over a million dollars, well over a million dollars. And that's not counting what the city is going to pay for its appraisers, its own attorney's fees. Is that really the greatest? You have to make a finding here that this project, taking, buying this cross is the greatest public good at the least private injury. I've sat here and listened to the testimony or the evidence and all these other things. You've got all kinds of things you need to spend money on. New police cars, safety projects. Your counsel says, oh, you don't have to consider money. Well, you do, because the greatest public good does include a consideration of what it's going to cost the city. For what? To remove a cross that occupies about four square feet of that park? You're going to spend over a million dollars? That's not the greatest public good. It's your decision, of course, not mine. But I'm giving you the same, I'm telling you now what I would tell you if I were representing you.
Thank you. With that, unless the special counsel has any words that they would like to say in response?
No, I just want to, I want to bring back to just a couple of things. I want to bring back to the council that those issues are not something that need to be considered for purposes of a resolution of necessity, that the length of trial, the cost of trial, whether or not they agree or disagree with the appraisal amount is not something that's determined here. Just one, I recognize that it might be my-
Excuse me, I'd like to respond to that if I may.
No, thank you, you've had your time.
Okay.
I do want to just, I do want to just bring up two things that Mr. Nichols brought up with respect to the staff report. He made mention that negotiations have stalled or that the owners requested eminent domain for tax advantage purposes. The staff report doesn't indicate that Lions Club has made any of those.
Page two, under discussion.
City clerk, could you please move the Lions Club representative back to attendees?
Yeah, and just so I, I just want to make sure I'm clear because the background in discussion does not reflect what has occurred with the Lions Club. Rather, it provides background of eminent domain law. It says the power of eminent domain is used by the city only as a last resort to obtain interest necessary for projects after. And then it describes three scenarios in which eminent domain could be used. So for instance, if the city had attempted negotiations with the property owner and those had stalled, it could go to eminent domain. Or in some circumstances, an owner does request that the city proceed directly to eminent domain because there are certain tax or other advantages, or that the eminent domain process is necessary to clear the title to the property. So those are simply the backgrounds as to when eminent domain is typically brought up. It does go on to say, in this instance, eminent domain would be needed in order for the city to eliminate the potential Establishment Clause. It does not say, in this instance, the city, the negotiations have stalled or that the Lions Club has requested eminent domain for tax purposes. I do also want to just indicate that by adopting a resolution of necessity, the city does not, under any circumstances, forego its ability to try to work out a resolution. You know, you, the city can adopt a resolution of necessity tonight, and a settlement can be reached tomorrow if so desired. We will certainly continue those discussions and are always looking to resolve property matters. And so please understand that by adopting this, it does not mean that you cannot settle the matter. So I just wanted to clarify that for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Noting that we are at 10:56 by my clock, I am going to suggest, well, I'm going to move that we extend to 11:30 in the hope that we don't have to go that long, but-
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting to 11:30. Any discussion? City clerk, please go ahead and hold the council.
Councilmember Gary. Yes. Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid.
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passed, or I had stepped on either verbally, city clerk. So with that, we will go to attendees' comments. I would ask you honestly to please raise your hands if you would like to comment. The hour is late, the council's ability to make cogent decisions deteriorates as the night goes on. So I do need to see honest raising of hands so I can decide how much time to allot to each speaker. Okay. I am counting at least 11 hands. So city clerk, if you could reduce the time to speak to two minutes each. And please admit the first attendee to speak.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jeffrey Blumenthal. I live on the 700 block of Adams, literally in the shadow of the Albany Hill Lions Club cross. I've lived here for about five years. I don't like it, I've never liked it, I'd like it to go away. It seems like a cut and dry example of inappropriate use of public space. I get it, there's an easement. How much is it worth for me, to me, for it to go away? How much is, you know, the cost of the lot, the cost of the litigation? I don't know, because I think it's a good point. There's a lot of needs out there, and this one just kind of makes me feel bad. I don't think, looking at South San Francisco or San Diego or any of these other places, if they're doing it wrong, I don't want to jump on that bandwagon. I haven't heard the Lions Club say anything about why they want it there. They've badgered the city council about how they're going to fight tooth and nail for this thing. But to me, I'm 45, I don't know what the Lions Club does. I think they're probably generally generous, charitable, they help people. But right now, all I know is that they're fighting tooth and nail for this artifact of the bygone era. I have this discussion with my father-in-law sometimes. I say, there's this thing up there, you know, that's inappropriate. And he says, well, it's a Christian nation, let them have their cross. And I say, it isn't, you know, in God we trust, on the dollar bill, there's all these instances of hypocrisy. But I don't think we need to jump on the hypocrisy bandwagon. And the cheapest, most charitable, easiest thing to do would be if the Lions Club says, how can we benefit the public that doesn't want this thing? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, hi, this is Roy Torgington. I live on Pierce Street. I'm opposed to the cross, so as a lot of you know. According to, you know, according to Judge Alsop's Federal District Court's 2018 decision, because of the presence of the cross, the city is in violation of the First Amendment's Religious Establishment Clause. And he said that the city must do away with that violation by either selling the land around the cross or by taking the Lions Club's easement by eminent domain. Now, I oppose selling the land because it would leave the cross in the middle of the park and would still appear to be part of the park. Contrary to what Nicholas and his associates said, Judge Alsop said that if the land, if some parkland is sold, quote, "The subdivision must be a coherent, separate parcel in such a manner that the public may recognize that the cross no longer stands on public land." Now, I oppose giving up a sizable chunk of the park, and this is not something that would be three or four square feet. It would have to be a lot more than three or four square feet to meet Judge Alsop's demand here. In other words, I support the city taking easement by eminent domain. Now, in the Lions Club's March 23 letter to the city council, Lions president and attorney state that, quote, "Should the city council persist in attempting to condemn the Lions Club's easement and cross, despite the Lions Club's proposal, the city would show a preference in favor of atheists or non-Christian religions as against Christianity. The Establishment Clause forbids this." Very interesting, because the city is now in violation of the Establishment Clause, and if they try to get out of it, they're, by taking by easement, they're violating the Establishment Clause, which is a little bit strange. But the, you know, if you use language, let's use language similar to that of the Lions Club, okay? One could say, if the city fails to take the easement by eminent domain but sells it to the Lions Club, the city will show a preference in favor of Christianity as against atheists or non-Christian religions.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pam Talu. I've been an Albany resident since 1997. I support this resolution of necessity. And, you know, I value the open space that we have there, and I want it to be unencumbered by the easement, by the cross. I really am feeling that the Lions Club is doing a serious disservice to this city. And I recently looked up what the Lions Club is supposed to be for, and it says on their international website, "Our mission is simple, we're here to serve." And they're there to serve the community that they're in. And the Lions, the Albany Lions Club is not doing that. The Albany Lions Club is threatening to take the city to court again. And it's just, it's, I'm really appalled, and I hope that the council doesn't fall for it, basically. It feels like a frog being perpetuated on us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Larry Hickok, and I'm the coordinator of East Bay Atheists. I'd just like to point out that the federal court required that the subdivision must be a coherent, separate parcel in such a manner that the public may recognize that the cross no longer stands on public land if the cross is sold as private lot. I'm sorry, I timed this for three minutes, so it's a little difficult. As the prior speaker pointed out, the Lions Club is trying to take only a small portion of the land. Regarding their objections to discrimination, just let me say, the Lions Club has accepted that the cross on city land is an Establishment Clause violation. This means the club has benefited from past city administrations' endorsement of their religion over others, a privilege that discriminates against non-Christians and offers everyone's, and offends everyone's support of diversity. Now, the club states that ending this privilege by eminent domain proceedings and action endorsed by Alsop's ruling is somehow reverse discrimination. In fact, it is long-delayed justice. Since when is the city obligated to sell off a significant portion of a park, in this case, cutting the park into two parts in order to not discriminate against an organization that has enjoyed past unconstitutional privileges granted by prior city administrations? So thank you, city council, for your work on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Brian Martin. I urge the city council to vote yes on this resolution of necessity. I stand with the city in the necessity to provide an unencumbered park, which provides the greatest good of the individual members of the Albany Lions Club of every right to worship as many gods or as few gods as they choose. But their club is not a church. The Lions Clubs are supposed to be open to people of all faiths and no faith. So it's troubling to see Albany Lions Club acting the way this one has and deviating from its core mission and along the way dragging the city into all of this. The Lions Club has brought upon the city, has played a major role in getting us into this, the city into this problem to begin with. As Mr. Nichols said, a Lions Club member, and his court documents have said, put the easement on the cross on his property, knowing it was going to go to a public park. Every court document in the 70s and 80s said, surely this is a constitutional violation. But nothing was ever actually challenged for this. In the 80s, when the land case was ruled on, the city council had an opportunity to act, and Mr. Nichols was on the city council and chose not to act. So he himself was part of extending this privilege the previous speaker spoke about for the previous 50 years. Getting rid of privilege is not persecution, it's justice. And I look forward to swift justice in this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Neal. I'm an Albany resident for 28 years. And just due to the late hour, I'm going to say that I support the council moving forward on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Reeves. I'm here with my husband Douglas Reeves. This prominent cross serves as a symbol for our city if we like it or not. This is about what is right. This is about separation of church and state. This easement from 1973 is outdated, wrong at the time, wrong now. If Albany wants to dot Albany Hill with symbols of all religious beliefs and non-beliefs, maybe we should consider it. My, if this cross was on the west side of Albany Hill, this would be gone now. It would be more prominent, and it would be gone. And then, I do believe that Lions Club is choosing to cause Albany this cause, so they're not saving us anything. They're choosing this, they're selecting this. And my last thought is more a creative thought of, if Albany owns the land around this cross, what precludes us from building a drapery around the thing? And just cutting this craziness? So, please, we appreciate very much all the work that you guys are doing and the late hour. And thank you. late hour, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Ian McLeod. I just want to say I would support adopting the resolution this evening. I think using the park as public space takes great precedence, so we're selling it. Selling it would be a tragedy. I think it would be a big shame to give up park space. I don't like the cross as a symbol on the hill. I think it's a divisive symbol. You know, I have nothing against anyone worshiping freely as they choose in their place and time of choosing, but not having a public symbol on our hill. I don't think it's representative of all Albany citizens, and I would support its removal. I think it sends the wrong message to some groups. And I don't really understand the Lions Club and their kind of, I just don't understand why they kind of badger us and threaten us with lawsuits. I think the cost is significant, but it is something that the Lions would choose to, to litigate. And I think if you really follow the, you know, the broad citizenry of Albany would prefer to see the cross removed, and I don't see why the Lions Club would want to go against what I, from what I'm hearing and what I've heard from other people, that would be in favor of having it removed. So I think the Lions Club is, in fact, in some ways, giving themselves a very black eye here. It doesn't comport with their mission statement that I read, and I don't see why they would be so adamant about keeping this cross, so, especially in the face of what I would say would be the majority of Albanians who would like it removed. So I encourage you to adopt the resolution. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Acuna. You know, the people before me have said it so well, but I would only add, just, you know, to keep going, City Council, on this matter, do use the eminent domain law to bring the cross in the Albany Hill down. The greatest public good is that the Lions Club ceases and desists, obviously. The Albany Lions Club exempt's tax status is actually based on serving community without financial reward, not debating partisan politics, not debating sectarian religion. The club is breaking their own bylaws and are breaking tax law by seeking exempt status because of what they're doing right now. Please support this resolution. To use eminent domain law, stay strong. We are showing the community that we can stay strong, armed, encountering moneyed individuals and organizations that are operating outside of the law and operating outside of their own bylaws. Thank you. I also want to say, you know, I do appreciate the City Council very much. Being nice is not always the kindest thing to do, and I just want to mention that. I'm not a City Council member, and I would never be able to be one, so I do appreciate you. But also, I am a resident, and when we keep on going over these things, it does make you emotional. That's normal. So I'm also appalled. And I am a nice and kind person, but I am very dedicated to these questions. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for taking this on, and thank you, City Council, for staying strong. I just came out from the other side of a frivolous lawsuit. You've done nothing wrong. So if they are going to sue you, just sit there and make them prove you've done nothing wrong and make them burn through their time and their cash. Because I just spoke with a resident that's in his eighties, he's black, and he remembers stories from his relatives, his elders, that in the nineteen twenties, the East Bay Valley was dotted by crosses from the Ku Klux Klan. And this is what it says to the elder black people. I don't want Albany to represent this, so please, keep this resolution, stay strong.
Thank you. Welcome.
Oh, boy. Good evening, Mayor and City Council and residents of Albany. I got a couple of questions. Who, who does maintenance? I don't know where to start. Gosh. It's so funny, right? In a few months, the City Council's going to be talking about everybody getting ready for Santa on Solano. You know, we keep going back and forth on what's right and what's wrong. You know? I mean, is Santa on Solano okay? Take your kids and have pictures? I mean, what, what is the issue here? Is it the cross, or is it the actual easement? I mean, the easement holds some sort of real value. You know, if it's a matter of the cross, you know, easy solution is relocate it. Relocate it to where, a place to where it could be okay. Like that empty lot on Solano next to Abrams. The empty lot with Raphael's Christmas trees. Relocate it there. During Christmas, put a bunch of lights on it. Light it up. That's on private property and do whatever you want. And then on, on Albany Hill, you still have your easement, so you could construct something else. You know, a lion or something.
And I believe that, I don't know that Mr. Nichols gets another comment. I would look to the City Attorney for that.
Mayor, I think we all confirm with my colleague Scott that we will allow Mr. Nichols the two minutes, just as the rest of the public received.
Thank you. Please proceed. You are a mute. We cannot hear you unless, there we go. Now we can hear you.
Yeah, just, members of the council, just a few brief moments to respond. There's been quite an attack on the Lions Club. Some members of the Lions Club hold that cross very dear. No one within the club itself has objected to it. I would just say this on a few other issues. It's been brought up that do you need to have a very coherent subdivision? If the, if the city did sell a small piece of land, that's very easy to do. You could just have markers at surface property of Lions Club. It wouldn't interfere with the public crossing over it. Not at all. Regarding Alsop's ruling, he did mention eminent domain, but he didn't have the context here. It's our position that because the, the First Amendment problem can be solved, there's no necessity for this condemnation. And that pretty much wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you. And not seeing any more hands raised, bring it back to council. I need to clarify with City Attorney. I believe now I close the hearing, or do we have council deliberation Do I close the hearing, and then we have council deliberation? Okay. Okay.
No other comments can be made by council or public.
Thank you for clarifying that. So with this, the, the public hearing on the matter is closed. Are there any comments or deliberation, further questions from council? If not, I move that the Albany City Council finds the following. A, the public interest and necessity require the proposed project. B, the proposed project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. C, acquisition of the easement interest in assessor parcel numbers zero-six-six-two-seven-fifty-four-fourteen-five and zero-six-six-two-seven-fifty-four-forty-three is necessary for the elimination of a potential Establishment Clause concern and to provide for an unencumbered public park in the city. D, the offer required by Section seventy-two-sixty-seven-point-two of the California Government Code was made. And E, the public use for this property, the easement interest, is a more necessary use than the use for which the property is appropriated. And therefore adopts, adopts Resolution Number twenty-two-two-three-two, a resolution necessity by the Albany City Council, declaring that acquisition of the easement interests related to ingress and egress for maintenance of a cross, as well as removal of the cross itself, a portion of Albany Hill located on the west side of the seven-hundred block of Task Street, Lot one-eighteen, Block eight, plate of Srito Hill located in the city of Albany, Alameda County, California. Described as assessor parcel number zero-six-six-two-seven-fifty-four-fourteen-five and zero-six-six-two-seven-fifty-four-forty-three by eminent domain is necessary for the elimination of a potential Establishment Clause concern and to provide for an unencumbered public park within the city of Albany.
Second.
It is then moved by Mayor Jordan, seconded by Councilman McQuaid. I am not going to read all of this again. I believe it was essentially verbatim from the staff report with due consideration by the council. Unless there are any comments? Not seeing anybody raise their eyebrows in that regard or anything else. City Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
And Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, I am going to suggest, given the hour, that we proceed to Item thirteen, which would be future agenda items, and that we hold over the other items to the next Yes, Councilmember McQuaid?
Mayor, I would like nothing more than to be done. However, I see people in the attendee list that I believe, or at least here for the disabled parking discussion. They've been hanging in there with us for over four hours. I think we owe them the respect to do at least that item, and there may be people here for the other item, the Juneteenth item, and I think we owe it to them to hang in there.
Yes, Councilmember Gary?
I can roll mine over to the next City Council meeting. I'm okay with that. Thank you.
So we have a request, and I'm inclined to, to go with it, to take up eleven, item eleven dash two under new business. Supposed to be skipping unfinished business, which has to the Parks Rec and Open Space Commission's request for addendum to its work plan. Is there any discussion on taking that course of action or objection or counterproposal? Seeing none, recognizing that we may need to extend, we will go ahead into Item eleven-two. This regards potential elimination of fees for residential disabled parking. Specifically, it would be providing direction to staff to bring back a change in the master fee schedule to potentially affect that action. Councilmember McQuaid, I don't know if you're willing to present, provide a few comments on this?
I, I will be, because my computer's about to fall apart. Actually, Mayor Jordan, you're the co-author. Can you start, and let me switch to a different?
That's fine. No problem. I think more than computers are about to fall apart. So the, this was an item to the, the master fee schedule requires that when a resident brings forward an application to establish a disabled car parking space on the street, on the public right-of-way, that if there is an application fee to do so, which is paid whether or not the city agrees or approves that application, and if the city doesn't approve that application, then there are a number of additional fees totaling, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's five hundred dollars, I believe at a minimum, and maybe over six hundred at a maximum, depending upon what the city requires to be implemented. This is, provides a barrier to access for, to transportation that people or disableds need. The city provides free car parking to able-bodied individuals, and so I believe it's fair to say that Councilman McQuaid, and my recommendation is that if the city's going to provide free parking to able-bodied individuals, it should also be providing free parking as needed in the locations where it's, where it's required, noting that the spaces would be public spaces still. They're not reserved for any particular individual, but that would provide parking for free to disabled individuals. With that, I don't know if there's any, any questions about this recommended policy direction to city staff? Not seeing any council members raise eyebrows, hands, or otherwise?
Mayor, I just, add one thing. I don't think I missed this. But the, the other piece of this is nothing changes in the application or the requirement to be granted the, the blue curb. Nothing changes in that. The only change is the elimination of the fee.
Yeah, so the process and discretion, city discretion will remain the same. Thank So with that, if we will, keeping it at two minutes, thank you, City Clerk, we will go to public comment. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I was just a little confused. At the beginning, you were talking about removing the application fee, and then you kind of went on to say that public parking's free, and so ADA parking should be free also. It is kind of implying that the whole cost of the sign and the pole and the paint for the curb and public works to come out and do the job, or a vendor to come do the job. Is that free also? Because, you know, free is free for the person, but I see the city side, you got to make money somehow. You know? You know, maybe, maybe do the greater good, maybe say the, the sign and the, the paint and all that is free, but maybe you still got to pay the fifteen-dollar application fee or some, something, you know? That way, I don't, but then, let's see, also, with that, let's say it's approved and it's installed. How long is that good for? Is it temporary or is it permanent? Let's say the property sells. Does that, is that included in, in the sale? And what is that ADA parking space value worth when you sell your home? You know, I can imagine putting that up on a Realtor ad. Oh, ADA parking, putting a really nice picture, a blue curb, an ADA spot. You know, ADA person might even pay an extra hundred thousand dollars. But, but then the homeowner's getting a hundred thousand dollars when they sell it, and the city's just nice to do it for free. I don't know. It's kind of a tough one.
Thank you. I'm going to take the opportunity, before the next person speaks, noting it's eleven-twenty-eight, that we will need a motion to extend if we are going to continue this.
I'll move we extend till eleven-forty-five.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to extend to eleven-forty-five. City Clerk, what do you think?
Mayor, Mayor Jordan? Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan? Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Welcome.
Oh, hey, it's Brian Beal again. Yeah, I wanted to speak in favor of this item. And thanks so much. You know, being disabled, even just being elderly is a difficult thing to deal with nowadays. You know, it's a time becoming disabled that you encounter. A lot of expenses and awkward situations. So it seems to me that. That this is kind of an expense that would be good if the community can afford to to absorb. It doesn't sound like we give a lot of these permits. So and I think by not having something like this. My concern is that that someone who needs it would be faced with a choice. Of well, you know, it's too much trouble. And then with the the increased shortage of parking in Albany. That they'd have to park far away from their house. And and being, you know, as fragile as some of these people are, that it increases the risk of injury. And it further declines their health. So so I would urge you to approve this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, thanks. And I want to applaud the council for bringing this item forward. I don't know where the other person was speaking, but as a person who has a blue curb. In front of her house, I'd be glad to. Sell the house for an extra hundred thousand dollars. That sounds really good, if not a little fantastical. I hope this is a harbinger of things to come in the city policies. I would note with the new. Activity guide going out, the last activity guide for the spring, the only activity that had. It had listed for people with disabilities was paratransit services. I'd like to see more offerings specifically for disabled people in the city. Disabled groups, not just accommodating people with other activities. And again, I hope this is the harbinger of other things to come. And thank you, Mayor Jordan and Councilmember McQuaid. Appreciate your thoughtfulness and bringing this item forward. That's it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Anne Capola Freeman, and I too wish to thank Mayor Preston. And Councilmember McQuaid, thank you so much for bringing forward this issue of eliminating the fees. For these residential disabled parking spots. For the first gentleman that spoke. Other cities in our area do not have any charge for residential blue zones. However, there are criteria for getting one in front of one's home. For example, you can't have accessible off-street parking. A lot of curbs. Are now in our beautiful city, there are people plants all over the curb, so you can't. Bring your it's hard to, if someone can't walk well, if you're getting into a passenger space, they couldn't get into their. Car very easily. People who have side ramps can't extend them to get in and out of their cars. And in a lot of other cities, you have to show proof like once a year or something like that, that you still have a placard. So no one's going to make a hundred thousand dollars off of selling a blue zone. And as Mayor Jordan said. The blue zone does not belong to the person who would be paying up to seven hundred dollars for that blue zone. But it is a blue zone that anyone who has a placard can park in. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands raised, so bring it back to council. Are there any? Yes, Councilmember Nathan.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Is there any any discussion? Just to clarify, the the item, the recommendation is the City Council direct staff prepare resolution. Amending the master fee schedule to eliminate fees for establishing and on-street disabled parking space in residential area. Question was raised about the application fee. I will note it's it's up towards a hundred dollars, so it's not as nominal as fifteen dollars. And I will ask the other question of what is the the time duration? Of these spaces once they're installed in response to application? I don't know if staff has that answer offhand. If you don't, understandable.
We don't have that information readily available.
Fair enough. It has been moved and seconded, the recommendation. There is no discussion. City clerk, will you please poll the council?
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. And I want to thank members of the community that brought this this matter to our attention. So with that, I'm going to suggest that I move or we move collectively to item thirteen, future agenda items. Seeing no no protest on that. I'm going to start with a quick review here of ones that that are on the on the plate here, if you will. So I had a call for NTC to reengineer Street Saber. I found that the duties of being mayor consume. Time such that I haven't been able to get to that, so I'm going to drop that from the list. We don't keep going to that. A portion of ranked choice voting education, I believe that will be coming to the council and. Well, if it comes to the council and and not too very long, we did have a meeting. Risk the city procedural proposal, and it's under the city manager's limit for authorizing expenditures. So I'm not sure. That will need to come back to the council. Councilor Nathan asked for a payment condition to come back to the council. If she's okay, there there is a process that the city is undergoing, and that will come forward, I think, naturally through Transportation Commission once that work is done. Is it okay to wait for that to happen?
Oh, you know, we exchanged some email about this. I I. No, if that's what if that's what has to happen, that's what has to happen. But, you know, it's a frustration because our PCI has fallen again. And there's just nothing more basic that we need to take care of than, you know, keeping the streets safe and smooth for everybody. Thank you. But yeah. Needs to happen. That's fine.
City manager?
Just a quick note on your next agenda, April eighteenth, we tentatively have a CIP update. And we will definitely address the PCI issue as part of that update. To help inform the conversation a bit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gary had shumy land tax. It's my understanding that maybe there the Ad Hoc Committee is working on that, is going to bring something forward. Okay, so we will await await that to come forward from the Ad Hoc Committee. Outdoor dining. City staff is working on a program and will be bringing that forward in in due order. That's all right. Research on Albany Hill trees, that is ongoing. And I believe that's going to come forward and do order as well. That's all right with you, Councilmember Gary. Let those evolve to a to a point where the information's been packaged up and completed. So with that. New agenda items. Yes, Councilmember Nathan.
There's one that I brought up last time, which is on my plate, and that is to update our sustainability. Section of considerations to make note of the. Urgency of climate change and issues and and addressing them. And find a procedural way to to put that a little more top of mind in our work.
Okay. Is there any other? New items? Yes, Councilmember Gary.
So definitely to bring back Juneteenth. Also, I remember last year. We spoke briefly about having a council and school district joint meeting, so I would like us to have that. And put that aside, so see how we can make that work. It would be awesome if we can somehow. Bring the council to the community in a way that is safe, but invites the community to come out in a different location outside of City Hall. I don't know what that would entails, but I think that would be a great way for us to continue the transparency and the. Relationships we have with our residents. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else. I do see we have an attendee. You have one minute. City clerk, if you could set the clock to one minute. And. Bring in hello.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, two future agenda items. One future agenda item. Is to remove those signs that were put up at the Albany, the Alameda County Library that's in Albany. And then the other future agenda item would be to. To put school zones, school zones on your agenda for consideration. I think it's really good for the city. Thank you, school zones.
Thank you. Bring it back to council. This evening or tonight, we are going to adjourn in memory of a longtime city employee, Councilman McQuaid. Could you let us know about a bit a bit about this employee?
Thank you. This evening, we are adjourning the city council meeting in memory of long-term city employee. Leona Illo. Ilona, sorry, I'm sorry, Ilona Carpenter, who passed away recently. During her twenty-five plus years of service for the city, Ilona worked at the Albany Senior Center in different capacities. Her commitment to the people she served was unwavering, and she had a big heart. Ilona's joy and dedication will be missed by everyone at the senior center.
And I'll take a take a moment. Thank you all. Thank you, Vice Mayor Tiedemann, Councilwoman Gary, Councilmember Payson and McQuaid. City manager, city attorney, K L B, for sticking with us, city clerk. We've gotten a lot done. I appreciate your service. Good night.